Welcome, everyone. I would like to call the meeting of August 2nd, 2016 to order.
The City of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The City Council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray. This evening's invocation will be given by Shadi Faradi of the High Faith Community.
And please remain standing, and Councilmember Hamm will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Wait a minute, we've got some Boy Scouts in the back, don't we? The Boy Scouts will come to the front of the City Hall chambers and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
O thou merciful God, O thou who art mighty and powerful, O thou most kind Father, these servants have gathered together turning to thee, supplicating thy threshold and desiring thine endless bounties from thy great assurance. They have no purpose save thy good pleasure; they have no intention save service to the world of humanity. O God, make this assemblage radiant, make the hearts merciful, and confer the bounties of the Holy Spirit. Endow them with the power from heaven, and bless them with heavenly minds. Increase their sincerity so that with all humility and contrition, they may turn to thy kingdom and be occupied with service to the world of humanity. May each become a radiant candle; may each become a brilliant star; may each become beautiful in color and redolent of fragrance in the kingdom of God. O kind Father, confer thy blessings, and consider not our shortcomings. Shelter us under thy protection and remember not our sins. Heal us with thy mercy: we are weak, thou art mighty; we are poor, thou art rich; we are sick, thou art the physician; we are needy, thou art the most generous. O God, endow us with thy providence: thou art the powerful, thou art the giver, thou art the beneficent. Amen.
Scott, would you please come up here and lead us in the pledge?
Do you just join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Hamm?
Here.
Mayor Potem Ward?
Here.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Doncheck regrets not being able to attend tonight's meeting due to her family's international travel plans. First item on the agenda is presentation of a certificate of recognition to Kendall Steyer.
Kendall, I'm going to give you this, I'm going to give you this plaque first, and then I'm going to ask you to say a few words. I give out a lot of plaques and awards or something. It's very rare that I get an autographed picture of a famous athlete, however. Very good. So I'm very, I'm very proud of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me, let me read this for just a second. This is from the City of San Clemente, certificate of recognition presented to Kendall Steyer for exceptional athletic and academic achievement. Kendall is a resident of San Clemente and a freshman at Saddleback Valley Christian School. Physically disabled, born with cerebral palsy, on June 3rd, 2016, Kendall won the State of California Interscholastic Federation Championship Gold Medal in the girls' seated shot put competition in the newly established girls' wheelchair division. By virtue, state of California, big state. In addition to her athletic excellence, Kendall excels at academics maintaining a 4.0 grade point average. The City of San Clemente hereby recognizes and commends Kendall Steyer for her exceptional accomplishments in both academics as well as athletics. That's from the entire City Council of San Clemente. I am honored to sign it as Bob Baker, the mayor, so thanks.
Thank you so much.
Say a couple of words.
Good afternoon, Mayor Baker and City Hall. My name is Kendall Steyer, and I am the first seeded shot put gold medalist in the state of California. I hold the record now for distance. We all know the phrase, if at first you don't succeed, try, try again. But what if you never even got the chance to try? I am a teen athlete with cerebral palsy, and until last January, I wasn't able to compete with my true peers. I want to show that I'm the best in the world, but first, I have to prove that I'm the best in the United States. And before that, I have to prove that I'm the best in high school. Luckily, in January, federal courts ruled that disabled student athletes can now compete in track and field events. I chose shot put. With the doors blown wide open, I took CIF finals by storm, winning the gold and setting a new state record. Deep in my heart, and the hearts of many of you, there is a refusal to let our limited perceptions define ability. That is why the US started the Para Olympics. In the next three years, I would like to astonish you with more gold medals and more state records. I am pleased to say that I'm now on the same team as my twin sister. We have both earned our varsity jackets, and she won league MVP for distance. She is so fast, but I am strong. I am honored to bring home this win as the first CIF para-athlete of this beautiful city. Thank you, Mayor Baker and City Council, for your support.
Come on, we're standing right, we're standing right over here with your mom. Come on, we're standing right here. And I'm going to, I'm going to shake your hand, I'm going to hand you this right here, and then we'll take a picture, okay? Come on in, your mom.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. What an honor.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks.
And next is presentation of a proclamation to Charlie Ware.
Everybody know Charlie Ware? He's been around town for a couple of years now. Starting to know your way around town, Charlie?
Just a bit.
Okay, good. Charlie Ware began lifeguarding in Laguna Beach in 1968 when he was 15, and continued to lifeguard for 10 summers. Charlie ran the Laguna Beach Junior Lifeguard Program for many years, and continued on his public safety path, serving as lifeguard supervisor and assistant manager at Lake Mission Viejo beginning in 1977. Whereas Charlie Ware swam and played water polo in high school, accruing numerous titles and enjoying subsequent success on the Cal Poly Pomona Water Polo Team. Charlie demonstrated further ocean skills when he paddled for the Dana Point Outrigger Team in August 1979. Charlie paddled solo on a paddleboard from Catalina to Laguna Beach. Charlie began a distinguished career as a sports announcer when he announced the Laguna Beach Lifeguard Competition. He helped initiate the games in 1977 and announced until 1981. During this time, Charlie was a disc jockey at San Clemente Radio Station, K-Wave FM on the weekends. I'm sure we all listened to Charlie at one point or other in our careers. Charlie's been the voice of the Ocean Festival since its inception. Charlie began announcing the San Clemente Ocean Festival in 1976 using just a bullhorn and would compete in paddleboard races after finishing announcement duties. Now, 40 years later, Charlie annually addresses hundreds of thousands of San Clemente beach visitors who attend this event using state-of-the-art broadcast systems. Now therefore, I, Bob Baker, Mayor of the City of San Clemente, California, acting on behalf of the entire City Council and all the citizens of San Clemente, do hereby commend Charlie Ware for his unwavering and strong commitment to San Clemente's Ocean Festival from 1976 to 2016. Thank you very much, Charlie.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And sometimes you can paraphrase these plaques, and sometimes you can't. There's everything in here, it's great stuff, so thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Say a couple of words, would you please?
Twist my arm, please. You know, it's been a magnificent 40 years as being the voice of the Ocean Festival, and working with the staff here, the City of San Clemente, and certainly with all the volunteers of the Ocean Festival group and the executive committee, it's been a pleasure. Now I get to turn my microphone in for that cold beer I was looking forward to at the Fisherman's Restaurant. I'll be back next year to enjoy it up there, and I'll see you then. Thank you once again, one and all. It's been a pleasure.
Next is presentation of a certificate of recognition to Patricia Holloway of the San Clemente Tree Foundation, commending the volunteers involved in the North Beach Roundabout Landscape Project.
I'm here to present a certificate of recognition. Now, there's a long list of folks that are on this certificate that aren't with us tonight. You'll mention them all. Okay, good. Then I'm going to hand this to you, Patricia, and I'm going to leave the speaking up to you now. How's that?
When good people get behind an idea, great things can happen, and the North, the New North Beach Roundabout is a perfect example. Two years ago, the San Clemente Tree Foundation came up with the idea to landscape the North Beach traffic circle. Art Guy, landscape architect for the beach trail, volunteered to prepare the landscape plans. We ran the plans by the North Beach Community Association, whose board supported the concept. Months later, the plans were approved by the city, and we began work. Tom Bain and Mark Porter with Taylor Morrison, and Bruce Taylor with Forecom oversaw the asphalt removal and brought in soil from the Marblehead Coastal Site. Rick Ham and John Sarti with Rick Ham Construction oversaw and performed the concrete work. Our local Robertson's Ready Mix donated 14 cubic yards of concrete. Chris Anselmo with La Strada Pipeline finished the asphalt patchwork around the circle. Tyler Dothwith with CRNR arranged to hollow away the asphalt and debris, and waived all the landfill and recycling fees. The Shade Tree Partnership, San Clemente Garden Club, Plant Depot, and local resident Lucian Toma donated plants, succulents and agaves, and/or funds to purchase plants. Glenn Froelich, owner of Glenn's Landscaping and Lighting, deserves special thanks for donating and installing the irrigation system and all the plant materials, some of which he also donated, as well as placing the gravel and some boulders which are soon to come. Finally, my husband Jim Holloway kept the project moving forward when there were bumps in the road. Since the, since this endeavor was a public-private partnership, I want to express appreciation to the City Council for waiving the fees for this project and paying for the installation of a water meter and yearly maintenance for the landscaping. In addition, I'd like to thank several individuals at the city who helped us with the project, Sean Nichols and Amber Gregg in the planning department. Sean especially pointed us to Taylor Morrison at a critical point in the project. And then Tom Bonnegut and Zach Ponson in engineering, and Daniel Laurie and his fellow construction inspectors. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Patricia. Here, let's, let's hand you this, Fred's going to take a picture.
Okay. Thank you, thank you so much.
Next is recognition of outgoing city commission and committee members. Next is recognition of outgoing city commission and committee members. Linda Chitwood, Beaches, Parks and Recreation Commission. George Gooch, Golf Course Committee.
George, you here? Gus is here to accept George's plaque for him. Come on, Gus. Gus will make sure that George gets it.
He's been so reliable for so many years. I'll make sure he gets it.
Chris McCormick, Beaches, Parks and Recreation Commission.
No Chris McCormick. Well, you can give him, you can give Chris this, he's at the golf course all the time, too.
Jim Ruland, Planning Commission.
Jim, I want to thank you personally for all the hard work you've put in for the City of San Clemente on, not just the planning commission, but all the ancillary things you've done for the City of San Clemente, talking about, especially one of my favorite topics is dark skies. Did you happen to see the space station last week?
I missed that one.
Direct, direct flyover. I got to get you on my email list, because it's, it's a, it was a perfect pass, right southwest and straight over the top, was the best. Anyway, thank you very much for the entire City Council and the, the city residents of San Clemente that don't even know where City Hall is. Appreciate it, too, because you've done a lot of good work for them, even though they don't know any of us, but that's okay. Tell us, say a couple of words, would you please?
All right, well, I, I have a lot to thank my fellow planning commissioners for. I've learned a tremendous amount from them, from the, from the tremendous amount of work that staff has done. I think we all have something to learn from them, but, yeah, let me just say to you on City Council, really, I've just got a heart filled with gratitude for the faith you've had on me in the past, to you and your predecessors on the council who appointed me to the GPAC and the Planning Commission, and the collaboration that we've been able to do together in subcommittees and the other work that we've done. You don't really have a, a lot of, not a lot of people have the opportunity to participate at this level in the city, and I'm very, very grateful for that opportunity, so thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Next is presentation by Information Technology Manager, Brian Brower, concerning the city's new online public records request portal. Oh, excuse me, I skipped one. Before that will be the presentation by Planning Commission Chair, Don Brown, concerning planning commission activities.
Good evening, and once again, I'd really like to thank my six years with Jim Ruland, too, who's through about 40 general plan meetings and everything else with the City Council. In the last three months, planning commission structure has been redone based on the recent term appointments. I'm going to be chair again, Bart Crandall, the vice chair, Mr. Blackwell will be the Chair Pro Tem. Blackwell, Mr. Blackwell will continue on coastal committee, and then Ms. Bart Crandall, Wayne Eggleston, and Mr. Wu will be DRSC, the Design Review Subcommittee, with Commissioner Smith as an alternate. Recent accomplishments, we, a lot of these things you've already seen, the capital improvement program, consistency with the general plan, state law, every year we have to look at that, and of course, it's already been passed here, and you put it into the budget for this year. Raya's Paradise at Cala, Cala Fia, you've already seen that, a new gateway, a nice design also helps our housing element. And then the bicycle corridor improvement project and the Pacific Coast Route signage for our Bicycle Sioux Town. In the cultural heritage permits era, we've done four of the permits recently, four of them in the T-zone architectural overlay, two on Del Mar. I think this is a result of the general plan amendment that the council passed last year, and particularly where you, the council, wanted, allowed individual resident improvements in the, in the overlay down there, in addition to mixed use. So we've stirred some, some really good deployments, two of them right down across the street from the library and the, and the, and the community center. Traffic Commission, we've been very active there, and three of those items are in front of you tonight, Avenue Pico striping, parking restrictions on Cali Oso, hopefully the first of several improvements in that area. That's the, the road behind Las Palmas School. It's a pickup point back there, and probably one of our most dangerous school streets. That street needs sidewalks desperately. The planning, traffic commissioners are on it, or I mean, the traffic engineers are on top of it with a good public outreach there. And you have some, the, the speed limit on vista hormosis on your agenda tonight. We've had some training sessions, you know, we're required to have training every year on cultural heritage uses and other planning activities, and so we've had some of that training and on our study sessions. In the near future, we've had one look at the lighting ordinance that Commissioner Eggleston and Ruland have been working on, and we'll continue on with that. We're going to have a session on accessory structures and the ordinance review, we've had some issues with that lately. Mr. Wright's going to touch base with us on a zoning ordinance streamline review, and every time Chris Wright comes to see us, ultimately about an 800-page document ends on your desk with a light industrial coat of oil and WD-40 to make the pages turn easy. We'll see how that evolves over time. There's a possible study, study session coming on home occupation ordinance, the commission's requested, this is kind of an STU tie. And then we're going to immediately, of course, reprioritize things on any required actions, future actions you take that may reorient our priorities here in the future. The future future, of course, is zoning ordinance update, Mr. Wright with Phase 3 and 4 of the zoning ordinance required by law from the general plan update, the specific plans. He showed me this Ouija diagram of how all the Pacific plans and the, and the local coastal plan, all that stuff is going to play together. He's got it figured out, it's a plate of spaghetti to me, but somehow we'll get it to you in the next year or so. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Don.
And Brian Brower, Information Technology Manager, will review the city's new online public records request portal.
Good evening, Mayor Baker, members of the council. Brian Brower, IT Manager, here to present to you the new online records request portal. So, this project's been in the, in the works for about a year, but we've been live since June 13th. In that seven weeks, we've used this system to collect 66 public records requests online, and we also put all of our walk-in requests into the system. The goal of this system is to provide a simple online interface for the public to make public records requests, and then we also use the system as an internal mechanism to track the fulfillment of the requests as they move throughout the different departments of the city. Some key elements are an online request form, which I'm going to show you in a moment. Also, the internal routing and tracking feature enables us to do detailed tracking of staff time that's spent fulfilling these requests. And then another important one is the online electronic delivery of the results of the request. And so when somebody makes a request, they get a confirmation online, and then, once it's completely fulfilled, they get an email from the city clerk's office with a link that they click on and download, download the results, rather than having to get in the car and drive down to City Hall and pick it up. So the process is, it's paperless, it's completely online, and it's very simple to use. To access the portal, you simply go to our web address, sand- Clemente.org/PRR, which stands for Public Records Request. That'll land you on this page here, and we have a little blurb here about the Public Records Act of California, and you click on Submit an Online Request, and it takes you to this form. From there, the requestor enters their name, their email address, and their phone number, and their address, and then a description of the request. Then they have the ability to create, to upload an attachment, so if they've typed up a detailed request in some kind of document, they can upload that document, so they don't have to retype it here. There's some other fields down at the bottom of the form, which have to do with email search requests that enable the ability to kind of narrow down the request, so we have date range, any keywords or key phrases that they want us to search for, and then any recipient or sending email addresses related to their requests. They then run through a little routine to prove they're not a robot, click Submit, get a little pop-up with a confirmation number, and you're done. From there, the request lands in the city clerk's inbox, and it gets routed from there. It's a fairly simple process. That's a, it's real-
What are the results posts like? Do they get a result back?
Sorry, what are the results posts like? Do you get an email back with all the information? Is it online?
You get an email with a link, and then you click on the link, and it takes you to, back to the portal, but it comes in PDF format.
That's right, okay.
We convert them all to PDF, so it's not anybody can view. And then if anybody didn't catch that address, it's right here, pretty simple, or you can just get to it from the, from the website.
So Brian, if somebody typed in a public records request and said, "I want every email that had Bob Baker's name in it for the last eight years," would they, how would that work?
Well-
Do they have to pay for the, things like that, or?
They do not have to pay unless they take physical delivery. If they take electronic delivery, it's all, it's required by law. We do not-
One of those unfunded mandates from Ohio.
People, the city does not charge a fee to fulfill these requests.
Okay.
Unless they're delivered in a hard copy or on a CD.
Okay.
If they take them electronically, just downloading them online, no, there's no cost.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Members of the audience who wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the City of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda, may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for Oral Communications Part 1, with each speaker being allotted three minutes in which to give his or her presentation. And I have about 10 cards.
All right, first up, Mr. Eggleston, and then Frank, and then Daniel.
Hi, good evening. Wayne Eggleston, San Clemente. I'm speaking as a private resident this evening and not as member of the planning commission. North Beach is going through a renaissance, big renaissance. One of the pieces of completion for the renaissance would be the rehabilitation and the reuse of the Miramar Theater and, and the Bowling Alley. And tonight, we have here Frank Daris, who's one of the owners of the Miramar, and, and Daniel Conrady, who is the architect. Jim Holloway was going to be here this evening, but he has come down with bronchitis. You know, over the past several, couple of weeks, I've made a number of presentations to the community with regard to the Miramar Theater. And one of the, one of the final questions people ask, is this actually going to happen? Is this actually going to happen? And I've said, it requires three, three things. It requires, number one, a committed city, a committed city council, a committed city manager to make this work. And number two, it's going to require a committed owner, committed owners who are financially able and who have the creativity to do it. And number three, it's going to take a community that's very supportive of this project. And without, without these, these ingredients, this will never work. As we have seen over the past few years, we've had many different projects coming through to the Miramar. But hopefully, the iron is hot, it's ready to move. So with that, I would like to introduce one of the owners of the Miramar, Frank Daris.
Thank you, Wayne. I'm Frank Daris. I'm one of the principals and one of the owners of the Miramar Theater and the adjacent Bowling Alley across from our neighbors at the casino, which has been wildly successful, and up the street from the Ole Hanson Project, kind of serendipitous that the North End and North Beach is, is coming together at the same time- time. I know Ole Hanson did the city in 1925. The theater started in 1938, so it's kind of interesting that we're both coming together to try and redo that at the same time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, our council members, staff, friends, neighbors, and residents from San Clemente. Our property marks and is the city's northern entrance on El Camino Real, and way back when, believe it or not, it was the gateway to the city before they built the five freeway in 1960. The theater is iconic. It's got a 44-foot bell tower. It was designed by a renowned architect, Clifford Balt, and acclaimed for its majestic design and Spanish colonial revival style. Tonight, our own architect, Dan Caniardi, who's built many, many terrific, terrific projects, is here to share our vision for everyone. Unlike our predecessors, and there have been many, we aren't here asking for five floors of elevation. We're not here asking for variances. We aren't here for what was asked in the past. We're here to rehab, we're here to reuse, we're here to revitalize and restore the luster to that beautiful theater. Inside, it is spectacular. It could provide a beacon, a place, an opportunity for our residents to meet, and we want to restore and revitalize the adjacent property to the specialty culinary restaurant so that people in the areas North Beach thrives have a place to come and meet. We've been pretty deliberate with our plans. We've structured them with minimal impact. We've been vigilant and attentive to the property's history. We're excited, we're humbled to share our ideas, and some of you may say, "Why now? Why not sooner?" We bought the property in 2007. We stumbled into the worst recession of our time. As you know, you can sue a ham sandwich in today's world, and that happened on this property. We patiently foreclosed out those who suggested they had interest, and now it's ours, and we're ready, and we're humbled, and we're grateful. So with that, let us introduce my architect, Dan Caniardi, and thank you so much.
And Brad Malamud's next, and then Stephen Colwell after him.
Hi, my name is Daniel Conrady. I'm a resident of Dana Point. I've also have done projects throughout Southern California. I've been very passionate about this project because the whole North Beach area is very dear to my heart. My kids learned to swim in Ole Hanson's pool. Last year, one of them competed in Russia representing the United States. So there's a legacy of what this area represents to me personally. As an architect, I looked at it as that there's certain characteristics of a project like this. One is the historical relevance of the representation of the project itself. And what we're planning to do is do rehabilitation and the reuse of the property. We're not looking at different types of plans that would enhance the economic feasibility of the project for the owners, but actually, we've been listening to the community people and the historical people, and we felt that there is a great solution that we could actually do on this property. If you look at the site plan up here, you'll see that the event center, and we're calling it an event center instead of a theater, well, could host many different types of activities. That event center could be a performing arts center. If there's a pointer, is there a pointer here? Oh, okay. The event center, which is in this area right there, could also be used for dances, meeting places. We want to maintain the stage that is on the, in the theater itself. We look at it as a complete asset for the community, something that people adhere to that want to come to the north side of San Clemente. We recognize that we're, we want to be in compliance with the general plan, and that is some of the policies that have been set. One is to create a gateway, an entrance to the city, and we felt that the height of this building, the prominence of this building could do that. In addition to that, we want to create a restaurant in the bowling alley. Now, the bowling alley has been dilapidated, it's, has a very low use in its current position right now. However, we want to maintain the overall look of it, and then create different types of venues that would bring activities to the North Beach area. Those activities would be specialties that would enhance bringing things for the beach community, so you could have walk-up beach restaurants, you could have coffee shops, you could have venues that would end through the night itself. Taking this lower section, which is just a hardscape right now, which is where the gas station used to be, would then become a sunken garden for the restaurants. That would be a breakout area. If we could go to the next slide. How do you do that? Okay, there you go. This is an elevation just to show you the, what the building would look like. The theater still maintains its presence. The bowling alley then becomes still the look of the bowling alley, but the use of that foreground facing onto North Camino Real. So again, as we look at this project, we really want to maintain the overall architectural presence of the building itself for your community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brad, give us a second here before we go on. Anybody have any questions, comments, anything you want to say?
Yeah, I'm excited to see what you guys have coming forward. If you'd like to set a meeting here at City Hall, I'd love to hear more about the project.
Yeah, I have more slides that show elevations too. And what we're planning to do is do a formal submittal on August 18th to the city. So you'll see a lot more in the landscaping plans, what we're going to do with each one of the buildings, and we have a lot of support from the local community for it. Thank you.
That was my question, August 18th. Thank you. Kathy's got a couple of questions also.
I would like to just make a comment to Mr. Daris in the back. He's one of the owners. The people in North Beach have done several questionnaires on what they would want, and they've said they want movies, concerts, events, performing arts, and the big thing that they really want with that is restaurants. So I am excited because this project seems to check off all those boxes, and I just wanted to tell you that it's wonderful to see a project proposal come in on that. These buildings are part of our heritage, and they need to come back to life and be vibrant again, and that's what everybody's looking forward to. So I appreciate, I appreciate you bringing a project.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you for that. I ride my bike past the project every day and wish and hope, and I hope with community support that it'll be something that's all proud of, and my kids and yours and my grandkids can have a place to call home.
Thank you very much.
That's great, thank you.
Council members, with respect to the online public records portal, for years, unfortunately, you've heard me ask for this over and over again, I've asked the city to agendize and vote to be a Sunshine City. For whatever reason, you won't agendize it, you won't discuss it, you won't do it, yet the city website still says that we're a, that we, that we provide all the documents to the public, which is not true. But more importantly, I think is a good start, of those 66 CPR requests, since it's gone online, none of them were mine. You should note, that's pretty important. But why not put all our documents online so that our staff doesn't have to search for them? I mean, that's just the next logical step. Storage is virtually free today. So instead of having staff, when, Bob, you said, why, you know, what happens if the request is for everything that emailed to me? You could just go online, search emails from Bob...
Excuse me, one second. Dave, would you ask the folks outside to be quiet down there a little bit? Thank you. Sorry, Brad.
No problem. But Bob, you made a fair question. That is, what happens if somebody asks for all emails from Bob Baker? Well, why aren't those all online? Why can't we search for those? The city's not hiding anything from anybody. They're all discoverable. If there's something privileged, market privilege, don't include it online. When the city changed their website a few years ago, we can debate whether it was good or bad, but they took off 15 years of documents, and I mentioned that at the time. Why aren't those back up? Why aren't those available for everybody to search and find? The city says they're transparent, but they're the furthest from transparency as I've seen. I constantly ask for documents, and my response are, "There's none available," and the response should be, and I wrote all of you this week, the response should be, "They're being withheld for privilege." It's not proper to say there aren't any. You have to actually disclose that privilege is being taken. So I'm just asking that the city follow the transparency that it claims on the website and hopefully save staff time and money by, from this point forward, putting everything out on the web for everybody to search. There's nothing to hide, let's not hide it. Thank you.
Stephen Colwell, and then I have a blank card from somebody. If you turn in a blank card, you're last. David Bales and Joe Janus.
Mayor Baker and city council members, thank you for this opportunity. My name's Steve Colwell, and I'm a Vietnam veteran. I served as an infantry officer with First Battalion, Fifth Marines in Vietnam, and I represent the 1-5 Vietnam Veterans Association, and I'm the project lead to build a memorial at Fifth Marine Memorial Garden, Fifth Marine Regiment Memorial Garden, excuse me, Camp San Mateo and Camp Pendleton. For the last two and a half years, Brian Cody of the Dana Point Fifth Marine Regiment Support Group and Ken Davis of the COFELT Vietnam Casualty Database have worked diligently to identify the 2,706 Marines and sailors who died while serving with the Fifth Marine Regiment during the Vietnam War. With that, after we identified, and we feel 100% confident we've identified all those who were killed. With that, we developed a design with Rock of Ages, the granite manufacturer in Vermont, who built the Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom memorials. The criteria for the Vietnam veterans is all names will appear, just like the other memorials, and the four regiments that served in country, First Battalion, Second Battalion, Third Battalion, and Second Battalion, Fourth Range will be represented. Each panel will be separate, and the names will include the rank. With that, we got the design, which is behind me here, and the Vietnam veterans community approved it. From there, we went to the Colonel Castor, the regimental CEO of Fifth Marine Regiment. He approved it. From there, we went through division, through, and then through base, Camp Pendleton Base, through JAG, from JAG to the Pentagon, where the Commandant of the Marine Corps approved it, and it's at the Secretary of the Navy's desk now for final endorsement. We, we just started fundraising about March, and I speak for the entire Vietnam veterans community that we would appreciate the support of the city of San Clemente to remember these 2,706 Marines and sailors who died for their country in a very brutal war, and it's the honorable thing to do, and we hope you will remember our fallen. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Colwell. Thanks, Mr. Colwell. Did you meet with Mr. Colwell?
I haven't yet, but I'd love to. I'm the liaison for the Marine Corps, representing the city in liaison number of items, and I'd love to meet with you further. We did make a donation to a previous memorial on, for the 2-4, and so this is right in our wheelhouse, and we, of course...
Well, Tim, I met with him last week.
Oh, you did?
And I did, I met with him last week, and I asked Mr. Colwell to come and speak at the meeting, hoping that we would agendize this for our next meeting. Their fundraising is, is up and running, and I thought we could agendize this for our next meeting, and, you know, if the council approved it, we could support this valuable and very, very necessary project to the same extent we did the last memorial.
All for it, no need to meet if that's, if you already met with him, then I'm all for it. Yeah, exactly. No, I appreciate it. This looks wonderful, by the way.
So I'd like to, I'd like to get this on the agenda for the next meeting, if that's okay with everybody, and then we'll, we'll ask Mr. Colwell for some added information. Thank you very much, sir. And if you've never, if you've ever been to Washington DC and you've never been to the Vietnam Memorial, do not miss it. It is, it will stop your heart, guaranteed. It is a very, very powerful place. Thanks, Steve. David Bales up, then Joe Janus, and then Jim Bieber, and a blank card. Anybody I didn't call, turn in a blank card. Okay?
Good evening. My name's David Bales. I'm a proud resident of San Clemente. I'm searching for my flag. It's the only reason I'm here. I realize you guys are extremely busy. Oh, look at that! Yes!
I have, it's funny, I have a picture of your arm I'm going to be doing during council member items. If you'd like to look on the screen, go ahead and put it up there real quick, because I think this is worth it. So I don't want to take your three minutes, by the way, but I...
I don't want to take up your time.
No, no, no. Let me give the backstory here. So what happened was, is Mr. Bales had requested a copy of our city flag, and we didn't have any. We used to give them out like 10 years ago. They've been ceremonial by nature, but certainly not widely distributed. And so I thought they were really cool. He said, "I'd love to get one," and I put on there facetiously that, "Hey, I'll tell you what, we'll see if we can get some made, and the first person to get a tattoo of this, I'll get him, I'll give him a free flag." Right?
Here I am.
Thinking that nobody in their right mind, whatever...
That explains it.
Right there, right? So no, no more needs to be said.
My wife calls me the crazy flag guy, because I'm pretty passionate about my flags.
So, so now, I'm, I'm giving you mine. This is the city council's. So what happened is, we had a run of 200 of these made, and I'll talk about it later tonight, because I don't want to take too much during public comment. 200 of these made, we're going to make them available to public. This is all your idea and on your behest. You're getting the first one that's available to the public, and I'm going to also get you, as soon as I can get one, a big one, because the tattoo deserves a big one as well as a small one, so...
And then I just have a, just a brief follow-up. Are merchants going to be able to get a whole lease? Because I've been approached by some local businessmen that would love to sell them in the store.
Yeah, yeah. So here's what the thinking is behind it. The city will, we want to get these flags out in people, but we can't make a profit off it.
Right.
We're potentially going to see if the foundation may sell them to be able to raise money for the Beaches Parking Market Foundation. We'd love for merchants to be able to have it too, so we're trying to figure out the details on that. The most important thing means that the residents have the opportunity to show their pride in our city.
Absolutely.
Whatever form or function that may take. And so I'll chat a little bit more about it during council member items. I'm so glad you're here, because I was going to track you down on Facebook to try and find you, to give you your own... Hold on, let me present this thing here. This is, this is worth it here. Come on, let's get a picture of you with a flag here. Oh, yeah. Look at that, it's so baddie. There we go.
To be honest, I think you do it because you're so busy, not because you...
No, no, no. We got them done real quick. So, so real quick here, so we had 200 of them made. We're trying to figure out how we're going to give them out to the public. We're thinking that short-term, we're going to have them in the golf shop, just so that we can be sold, right? So we'll get some more details behind that, but our goal is to get them so that people show their pride in the city. Thank you for your wonderful idea. Appreciate it. Mission accomplished. Good job, buddy.
Great, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out.
Ay caramba.
Hey, Bob, apparently, that was a great tattoo. We could always arrange to have that put, right? Big old life-size on your back, right there.
Okay, very good, thank you, yeah. Mr. Janus, please, then Mr. Bieber, then Dominic Cox, and then Anthony LaFranco.
Man, that's a, that's a tough act to follow right there. Hi, council, I haven't seen you for a while. Well, I guess it was in two months now that we started a new regulation on STLUs, and I think the managers out there are trying to do the best they can, and everybody's on their best behavior, but I've still been woken up three times one week at 1:00 in the morning by late arrivals, and then the next week, I was broken up at 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning with people leaving earlier. And these people are really nice folks. I've met them, they're nice people, no doubt about it, but they're still vacationers. So how do I do this, then? The first slide? Yeah, so I was in bed one night at 9:30, and this is what I woke up to. That was a trash truck or something, but let's see. Yeah, a big semi pulls up, and it's pretty noisy. I wondered what it was, and I looked at this thing, and then I saw the STLU renters were out there, so I thought I'd better pull my pants on and go out and see what's going on. So the next slide shows what it was. It was a car transport from Oklahoma. The folks had a new Camaro shipped out to them at 9:30 at night, and you can't really hear the sound on this thing, but believe me, it was pretty loud, and so it blocked two of our neighbors' driveways for, you know, 30 minutes or something like that. So that's another thing that, it's not against the law to do this, but it's annoying to the neighbors who live there. And then also, we have, the next slide is excessive parking. Usually, there's five cars parked in there and one in the garage, and when they start shuffling things back and forth, it's kind of, you know, a lot of traffic there. And then the next slide shows also STL parking in front house. The next one is across the street from the house and down the street from the house, and then they had an event that night also. So it is still happening like we had thought it would be. Code enforcement comes out, and they can't really go and count faces and bodies and stuff. The next one, our neighborhood kids were playing basketball there, and then the guy in the, in the blue pickup truck pulls out and parks there. I thought he was going to be there for five minutes. He was there for a couple hours. The kids only played for like 10 minutes after that. But I think that's a safety issue, you know? We have visibility problems with cars parked that close and stuff. So, once again, not against the law, but it's a real problem for our neighborhoods. The next one, a lot of the managers have told people, "Listen, you can only have two cars here, so you know, you can't have cars here." So what they do, they park around the street, and they walk their luggage around the street and park the car there for three or four days, and they walk back. This stuff's happening to a lot of the places. I've spoken to a lot of the neighbors of STLUs, so it's still happening. We know the city has a court hearing about a settlement meeting or something coming up next month or this month. And we want to encourage you, the city, to stay the course on these new ordinances. The vast majority of the people out there do not think that STLUs are compatible with our neighborhoods. Thanks.
And before we go on here, I, I got a question for the city manager and maybe the whole council here. You know, when we instituted these short-term lodging unit regulations, in our ordinance, when we were talking about the ordinance, we talked about, we're going to take a look at it in 18 months and see what was up. But we never really talked about what we were going to measure. Are we going to measure parking? Are we going to measure violations? Are we going to measure, what really are we going to measure here? We never really talked about that. So if this, if it's the council's pleasure, we could talk about it here, or maybe the city manager could come up with some ideas for us and, and talk about some good ways that we could measure this. So when we're out 18 months, we don't, aren't confused by some of, some of the results that come back, that we can actually have some results that say this, 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 and this.
Cecilia and I will get together and we'll talk about it, along with Brent Panis and code enforcement, and we'll come up with some ideas for how to quantify the issues out there and what we're trying to measure over the next 18 months. And we'll come back to council on that.
And we're going to notify the public so they can weigh in on the item at that time.
Okay? Is that all right with everybody? Okay? Thanks. Yes, sir, Mr. Bieber.
As we recall, there was a ethics hearing at the last meeting regarding Kathy Ward's editorial that she published in the SC Times, where she directed city staff to work for nine days crafting a hit piece. Two things kind of jumped out in that editorial. The first one was that, right in the headline, she said she wanted to question the motives, ulterior motives of those circulating a petition looking for district and community voting. Another thing that hopped out was this big glaring tagline at the end of it was "One Team, One Town." Next? Yeah. And so that's the team. And it's nice to have a team if, if they're on your side. And if we look at a couple of key things that I know that my community is concerned about, I see that the team has kind of fumbled the ball. I've been to the emergency room a couple of times, broken ankles, I've got kids. One thing I really wanted in a town of this size was emergency medical service. So we had memorial care. And so we could have worked out something. We could have had leadership, quality leadership. Do we keep the hospital? No. Well, at least we got an emergency? No. Urgent care? Nope. And the final coup de grace over your leadership on this is you had to go that extra step and play Frank Underwood on House of Cards and do spot zoning, resulting in a $43 million lawsuit against the city, which we are going to lose, which you were warned not to do. It's illegal. It's going to burn the city, and we accomplished zero on that. The next, obviously, is crime. You know, we're leading the way in burglaries, rapes, horrendous things. But the result is, you know, the mayor lashes out at people that bring up studies and publish things on Facebook, and that's not appropriate. We're doing a fabulous job on crime. The bizarro thing was Chris Hamm at the last meeting said that, you know, "We addressed public safety the last three budgets, and now I'm so pleased to see the public coming out and validating what we've done." Well, they're not validating what you've done, they're complaining you didn't do anything. And then you're not taking action. And the final one is on the issue of sober living homes and vacation rentals. You'd have decided to join them together and say that vacation rentals are the same thing as sober living homes, which is like a golf cart and a bulldozer. They both have steering wheels, but that's about as close as they get. A home team, we look at Newport Beach, this year they shut down 63 sober living homes. Since you enacted your ordinance, and it took effect in June, four more have opened up in our city. If we look at Costa Mesa, they shut down 33 this year. Since your ordinance came into effect, four have opened up since June. So this one team, you know, we're not married to this team, and it's a bizarre thought that a team members within spitting distance of each other should deserve any sort of praise whatsoever.
No, I'm going to do it. Normally, I don't comment on comments from citizens, but I'll start with the hospital. You can sit down, Mr. Bieber, because you're not going to get to speak anymore. I'll start with the hospital. That hospital, at least now, has a chance to be a hospital. Had we allowed it to be an urgent care facility and an outpatient surgery center, it would never be what the City of San Clemente needs, and that's a hospital and an emergency room. So, and I'm going to stop there, that's okay. Go ahead.
Okay. I want to address, for the public, my comment on "One Team, One Town." That is not a tagline. That is a very common saying in San Clemente. "One Team, One Town," when we say that, we are giving credit and support to our high school football team, the San Clemente Tritons. So anytime I say that, or anytime in the future, when I say "One Team, One Town," I am talking about our high school. I am not talking about this, the San Clemente City Council. So I just want that clarified for the public. And I'm sorry, Mr. Bieber, that you did not know that that was a common saying in San Clemente.
Bob, hold on one second. For the record, I've just got these numbers earlier. I'm glad, glad this worked out here. Since we began the moratorium and since we began litigation, we've had 15 sober living homes in San Clemente that have closed. We've had three detox facilities that have closed, as well as 14 commercial businesses related to sober living homes that have closed.
So a total of 32? So, in other words, Tim, a total of 32 that have actually closed instead of Mr. Bieber's number that was whatever he put up?
Yeah, that's 32 by my count, not including our ordinance and the other items we've done, which have been ceasing to do operations on their own behest.
Thank you. Dominic Cox, and then Anthony LaFranco.
Hello, Dominic. All right, is this working? Hello, good evening, city council members. My name is Dominic Cox from Boy Scout Troop 724 of San Juan Capistrano. It's been upsetting to me that a lot of hate and violence are being directed against police officers across the country in the past few weeks. As a project, I decided to start Operation Support Orange County Sheriffs, or Operation SOS, which is a thank you letter campaign for local South Orange County officers. I am asking the public here tonight to sign blank thank you cards that I brought. I'm going to be outside for the next 20 minutes, and I ask everyone to come out and take a moment to sign one. I will be collecting these cards till the end of August. If you wish to write your own email and cannot sign one tonight, you can send it to letterforSOS@gmail.com. Thank you for your time. I hope we, as a community, can help support our brave men and women in our law enforcement. Thank you.
Dominic, give us that email address one more time slowly, so everybody at home can hear it.
And we're, and...
F-O-R.
And so if we want to write a thank you note, we send it to that email, and then you're going to collect them and then send it on from there?
Mm-hmm. To local stations and substations all across South Orange County.
Great project. Great idea. That's great.
Thank you.
L-E-T-T-E-R-F-O-R-S-O-S at Gmail.
At Gmail.
Gmail dot com. Thank you very much, son.
Thank you. Thank you.
Seeing Dominic's on Team San Clemente. Good job, Dominic. Good job. Got to support our law enforcement officers. Been horrible the way they've been treated lately. Disgusted. Speaking of disgust, where's Bieber? Well, Bieber's obviously playing on a different team.
Mr. LaFranco, please, please address the city council.
Sorry. Okay, Mr. May, I apologize. I, I actually apologize to all of you for the abuse that you've had to endure with Jim Bieber over the past couple of months. The one thing I do know about Jim Bieber is that I think he's a liar, because he's trying to pitch this redistricting campaign as "It's good for your neigh, it's good for the neighborhood. Don't you deserve to live next to a council member?" He's really not. He's doing this because he represents big business interests in San Clemente, and the big business people want to take over this town, and this is the way that they will be able to control VRBO and other business operations in town. In terms of the hospital, if he thinks he can do a better job, then run for city council, Mr. Bieber. In terms of crime, it's a very topical subject right now in San Clemente, and he's just playing the current, current. Sober living homes and VRBO, we want none of them. I was in Santa Cruz recently, and in a VRBO home. It was owned by someone who is not from this country, comes from a country with big money, and they're parking it over here. And what they're doing is they're buying VRBO as an investment to get their money offshore from where they're domiciled, from where they live. And they're coming in, they have no regard for families. It's disgusting. So what I would ask all of you here to understand is that Jim Bieber don't surf, Jim Bieber ain't from here, Jim Bieber's coming in here trying to control the town, and he's coming in here to represent big business interests. And I'm glad he's outside listening to this, because, Mr. Bieber, you don't surf, you're not from here, we don't want your kind here. We know you think you're tough, because this is what you do for a living. You come in here and you try to smear politicians, get them elected, get them unelected. And I think it's just disgusting the way that you have behaved here in city council with all of this, the false information that, that you're providing the public here. I think they know your game. And I would have to apologize in advance to Mr. Hamm and Mr. Baker for the intensive smear campaign that you will endure this election season. It's going to be a Jim Bieber-led smear campaign. It's going to be disgusting, it's going to be gross, but guess what? I'm not falling for it, and neither are most of the people in San Clemente. We do not want redistricting in this town. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. LaFranco. That's it? Yeah. Did I miss anybody? There's a blank card.
I had...
I did, oh, okay.
I had a card for number seven.
You'll speak about it when we get to seven, then. Thank you. Yeah. I thought we had the culprit there, and sorry.
Could we have a motion to waive reading and...
So moved.
Motion by Brown, second by Hamm. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passing unanimously. Pass. That's it? Yeah. Did I miss anybody? There's a blank card.
I had...
I did, oh, okay.
I had a card for number seven.
You'll speak about it when we get to seven, then. Thank you. Yeah. I thought we had the culprit there, and sorry.
Could we have a motion to waive reading and...
So moved.
Motion by Brown, second by Hamm. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passing unanimously. Thank you very much. Go ahead. Letterhead, on letterhead.
The OCFA wants to put our seal on their letter.
I, I think it's completely appropriate. Is everybody okay with that? We're sending this on city, we're sending this on city letterhead.
I would ask the city attorney before.
Okay.
Yeah, the council can authorize that, but they can't do it without that authorization.
Okay. Well, I'll move that we authorize the Orange County Fire Authority to allow the usage of our San Clemente city seal on...
Second that motion.
...their letter that they're sending. Motion by Baker, second by Brown. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passing unanimously. Thank you.
Okay. Close session report, city attorney.
There was no reportable act. Sorry, there's no reportable action taken, mayor and council.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council, staff, or the public request removal, removal of an item for separate discussion and action. I have not received any requests for removal.
I got one, Bob. Item P.
Say that again, Chris.
P.
P is in Peter.
Peter Paul.
Okay. Kathy? And basically what the legis-- the Fire Authority Board of Directors has done away with our alternates, we've made the board smaller. And that was the gist of Assemblyman Daley's last bill, 1217, that was pulled back. But it's come back again and part of this bill is to mandate that we, that this JPA remove its alternates. Well, it's not something the state should do, it's something that the JPA should do. The JPA managed it itself and has done so very well for almost 30 years now, so. We did, yeah, we did away with alternates right away. So, anyway, I would like to, to discuss this letter and, and, you know, authorize us to send this letter out immediately on city letterhead with my signature as the mayor and.
Do we have to vote to agendize first?
Yeah, if you could, Mayor, based on the finding that the need to take action arose since the agenda's posting and that they needed input before that? If you could add it with a four-fifth vote and then.
Bob, what's the urgency again of it, so that I'm aware?
The urgency is that this goes before the assembly on the 15th, I believe, of August. And we have a meeting before that. So I'm going to move that we agendize this for discussion.
Second.
Motion by Baker, second by Ward, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passing unanimously.
Can you circulate the letter so we can?
I will be happy to. Oh, you should have a copy, it looks like this, looks like that. I'll give you my copy.
Do you want to consider it under new business then or now? It's your choice.
Don't you want to do it right now?
Sure, you can.
We'll do it right now.
Okay.
It'll just take a minute.
Oh, no, no, I have this, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have a copy of this, I read it.
Yeah, so if, and I'll just read the letter for folks at home. City of San Clemente continues to oppose AB 1217. The August 1st, 2016 amendment does not change the fact that AB 1217, did I say 217, I meant 1217, erodes local control by dictating board size and composition. Orange County Fire Authority was created under the Joint Powers Act to provide local fire and emergency services. This bill is an unprecedented intrusion into OCFA's governance and a threat to all joint power agencies. OCFA was formed in 1995 as a JPA with the foundational purpose of providing member cities equal governance. The Orange County Fire Authority JPA has been in place for more than 20 years. As you know, member agencies may change the composition of OCFA's board by a two-thirds vote. This authority was invoked last year when the OCFA Board of Directors voted to eliminate alternate directors in just 20 days. Legislature should not dictate the form, size, or structure of an existing JPA. Moreover, AB 1217 remains a broad overreach into the governance of a well-established local agency, one that responds to more than 400 fire and emergency medical calls every day and consistently receives a 97% community approval rating for its service. On behalf of the city of San Clemente, I must respectfully inform you of our strong, ongoing, and unwavering opposition to AB 1217. Sincerely, Bob Baker, Mayor of City of San Clemente. If that's okay with everybody. All right?
Chris, I mean, you're the one who's also, okay. So just for clarification, there's no reason I need to accuse myself.
Yeah, it's, it's, any interest is exempt as governmental income.
All right, then I want to move we send the letter just like that?
I'll second that.
Mayor, motion by Baker, second by Brown, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passing unanimously. Thank you very much. Go ahead. Letterhead, on letterhead. The OCFA wants to put our seal on their letter. I think it's completely appropriate. Is everybody okay with that? We're sending this on city, we're sending this on city letterhead.
I would ask the city attorney.
Okay.
Yeah, the council can authorize that, but they can't do it without that authorization.
Okay. Well, I'll move that we authorize the Orange County Fire Authority to allow the usage of our San Clemente city seal on their letter that they're sending. Motion by Baker, second by Brown, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passing unanimously. Thank you.
Close session report, city attorney.
There was no reportable act.
Sorry, there's no reportable action taken, Mayor and council.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council, staff, or the public request removal of an item for separate discussion and action. I have not received any requests for removal.
I got one, Bob. Item P.
Say that again, Chris?
P.
P is in Peter.
Peter, Paul.
Okay, Kathy? Tim?
Item F.
F? Is in Foxtrot? Okay, I was also going to pull F, so.
Move the balance.
Motion by Brown?
Second.
Second by Ward, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passing unanimously. All right, item F, please, Tim.
So this is a project and the title is, is it's a grant provided by OCTA for a project via community-based transit striculated rideshare beta test rider. And we have here our very esteemed traffic engineer. And one of the things, reasons why I pulled this item is this is something that I, in collaboration with staff, worked up this idea to be able to provide some type of transit service to those residents who would be, have their bus service removed when those lines in the backcountry of San Clemente are removed coming up. And so I was hoping, Tom, if you don't mind, give us a quick rundown of what we could expect in terms of a timeline and what this, you know, what our plan is to get this up and going, just in terms of how it's conveyed here in the staff report.
Okay, yeah, Tom Frank, I'm your transportation engineering manager. And I'll give a real brief summary and then, of course, if you want me to elaborate on something more, please ask. As of October 9th, 191 and 193 routes will be terminated. So as Tim, Councilmember Brown mentioned, we collaborated with OCTA staff to see if we could develop a ridership beta test program to address the loss of those bus routes for the existing users. So they did award us this grant and they sent us a cooperation agreement in an expeditious fashion. We've been working with OCTA and approaching the different rideshare vendors to understand what their key issues are. And we're going to make every effort that we can to try and get a service in place by that deadline. However, there are no existing programs that we can borrow from, so it's quite an extensive task underhand and we're looking to see what we can do as soon as possible. But we cannot guarantee that we will have it up and running by October 9th.
We know how slow things work in government, but I'm glad this is before us tonight. I'm grateful for the council support that we had on this and frankly, it's kind of an exciting concept. It's something that's going to take a lot of work to get there, but something that I feel will have some merit. I don't know, Bob, you had, you pulled it too, you had some questions about it?
I did, and I have the same feelings, Tim. A friend of mine, you know, is maybe, I don't know, who knows this, but anyway, till I used to have a trolley to the beach and one of my friends who was on the homeowners association board out there said that it was so little used that they could have paid for a limousine service to take those people to the beach and save a lot of money doing it. But I think, to me, this is a terrific collaboration between Orange County Transit Authority and a very good idea, Councilmember Brown, for bringing this up and you also for getting on board with this, Mr. Frank. So I think it's a, it's going to be a wonderful thing and it's going to, it's, it's going to be site-specific, as they say, which I think is always a good money-saving idea and I, I fully support this. Now, the trolley thing, that's another, we'll talk about that later, but, but I'm fully supportive, I think it's a wonderful idea, can't wait for it to get up and running. I think it's a, I think it's a great idea. Can't wait to see, this is another thing, we have to decide how we're going to measure success at, though. We're going, I hope that's part of the, part of the plan is we're going to define success as X and.
Well, it's got very specific rider targets.
That's right, there are rider targets.
And, 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 and this is one of the things that's a little challenging about is that OCTA, they have clawback provisions on this and so if we're not meeting our ridership targets, they'll pull it back. This is going to be a government program that's going to continue to exist without working, either it's going to work or we're not going to go forward with it.
That's one of the reasons I'm in favor of, because that's, that's a great idea. If it's serving a need, then we'll fund it. If it's not serving a need, stop funding it. I couldn't agree more.
Let's hope we get enough, get enough riders, get enough time to make it work for our town.
We'll see.
Thanks, Tom, appreciate it.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Motion by Brown, second by Hamm, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passing unanimously. Chris?
So I just pulled P because the brothers have been sitting in the back there waiting patiently all evening, listening to the fireworks. So I figured they'd want to come and say a couple of words.
Let's hope the waves aren't firing right now, otherwise it'd be a real bitter time here, yeah.
Hey, guys. How are you guys doing? It's a pleasure to be here with you guys and for everyone, my name is Dane and this is my brother Patrick and Tanner. And three years ago, we started the Positive Warriors Foundation, which kind of assists communities with water, I'm sorry, youth water safety programs, which is super fun. We've been working with you guys at the Stokeramas at T Street, which was great, total fun last year. And we actually just did one at Huntington Beach last weekend and it was great. We raised some funds for the YMCA swim scholarships for the kids around there, so, yeah. So we're just asking from the Positive Warriors on behalf and saying thank you guys for all your guys' support for the Stokerama, if it'd be possible to kind of waive the fees for the permitting of the event again for next year.
Yeah, so I'm excited to waive the fees again this year like we have the last couple of years and that we were able to host the event at T Street. I think it's a great venue for the Groms. Did you guys bring us any stickers like you brought us last year? Chris, you've got one on your notebook, look here. Since the first one I brought.
That's awesome.
I see that every time, I'm like, why don't I have a sticker on my notebook? I've got sticker envy.
It keeps me sane sometimes when I'm sitting up here listening to people comment about how poorly I'm doing, so.
That'll get you through the day right there.
Appreciate another one, yeah. But I, for one, I'm excited and while we're here, can we give a shout out to Tanner? You're going to be at the Lower's Pearl coming up next month?
Yeah, yeah, that'll be September 8th. Oh, sorry.
Congratulations, by the way.
Yeah, thank you, guys. That'll be exciting to just kind of be a part of it. The local trials is always a fun one and this year felt like it was like the most highly contested it's ever been, so I was stoked. Represent the boys this year.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And, and just from all of San Clemente, I want to thank you guys, the whole family, for being so in tune to community issues and helping the community with important things like this. Because you guys, you guys speak with a very loud voice around there, so I want to congratulate you very much for doing what you do. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for that, thank you.
Have a great night.
Yeah, without, I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion by Hamm, second by Ward, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passing unanimously. Thank you.
The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the manner by motion. This evening's public hearing relates to repealing ordinances related to emergency shelters and initiation of a new zoning amendment pursuant to Senate Bill 2 relating to the development of or conversion to emergency shelters.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Jim Petches, city planner. And as the city clerk so explained, on July 1st, the Superior Court held that the city's emergency shelter ordinance was invalid and ordered the city to repeal the ordinance and enact a new ordinance that complies with the Senate Bill 2 requirements. So therefore, this request is first to repeal ordinance 1585 and ordinance 1611, which both relate to the establishment of emergency shelters by right. And then the second part, as I mentioned, is to initiate a new zoning amendment that will be developed pursuant to SB 2. Just finally, just kind of in this process, the next steps, we have some dates for the actual draft ordinance on, what is it, September 21st. The planning commissioner will review the draft ordinance and make recommendations to the city council and that'll then be forwarded to the city council on October 18th. So staff's recommendation is to introduce the ordinance of the city of San Clemente repealing both the ordinance numbers 1585 and 1611 and also to initiate a new zoning amendment pursuant to Senate Bill 2. Any questions?
Who's got a question for Jim? Got one? All right, I got a couple of cards on the, Dennis Etlin and Jim Rulon. Pardon me? Oh, sorry, I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Etlin, you're up first.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Dennis Etlin, I'm a resident of San Juan Capistrano. I'm very concerned about the situation with homeless in all of the Beach City towns. The Superior Court was pretty firm in their rejection of your plan, as was the state of California. And I just wanted to make sure that you know that there are many people out there who really would like to see the city cooperate with those who are trying to serve the homeless, trying to make, make the city of San Clemente and the neighboring cities a better place for visitors and residents. The, I would hope that the planning commission and your efforts would both make a shelter both feasible and likely and also support a day, day-use center, which I think could very easily be on the city public-owned property, much as Mary's Kitchen is in the city of Orange. And the shelter would be on a totally separate piece of property and there may need to be even consideration for a regional center since San Clemente is one of the larger cities in South Orange County. So I would just try and impress that there will be many eyes looking toward you and toward your cooperation with the agencies and the groups that are working to serve the homeless and of course, the homeless themselves will be keeping an eye on this project. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rulon?
All right, good evening. I don't know what your next plans are with this, obviously it's a difficult issue, but having been on the planning commission, the last time we went around with the, with the SD, SB 2 issues, I wanted to maybe presume to make a recommendation. And we did it before, we were kind of, I think we did the best job that we could, the planning commission did. We were kind of trying to boil the ocean and answer the whole big question of where should the zoning be. My recommendation would be that you narrow the scope of what the planning commission does. Keep it focused on, say, if this is, if a particular area is chosen, the planning commission says, well, this is a valid use or not and perhaps does the guidelines for that use, rather than, you know, having it, having the commission try to make the whole big decision. That might help the public as well, so that they don't have to go and argue their case, you know, in front of multiple bodies and that sort of thing. But if you made the decision or a subcommittee made the decision on a particular zone that was appropriate and then the planning commission just said, yes, that's an appropriate use for that zone or not, and made that recommendation to the council, I think you might find a more efficient process and a more process that might serve the public a little better as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Anybody else like to speak about this? All right, without, I'll close the public hearing.
I move that we introduce ordinance number 1630 entitled Ordinance of the City of San Clemente repealing ordinance numbers 1585 and 1611 codified as sections 17.56.100 to 17.56.105 of Title 17 of the San Clemente Missile Code relating to emergency shelters and to initiate a new zoning amendment pursuant to Senate Bill 2 relating to the development of or conversion to emergency shelters.
Motion by Hamm, second by Ward, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passing unanimously.
Next is a report from the Public Works Director, City Engineer, concerning a design phase agreement for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers sand replenishment project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tom Bonniget, Deputy Public Works Director and Chief Rabble Rousier. Sorry about that. The item before you is to, and I don't have a formal presentation except for an explanatory slide here on the funding, but the item before you is to seek your approval of the required cost-sharing agreement if it's your council's desire to proceed into the next phase of this project, which is the design phase required before we're able to put sand on the beach under this Army Corps project. So I think maybe I could have done a better job to explain the dollar, so let me just review that quickly and then answer any questions you have. The total cost right now, the Corps estimates is a little over 1.1 million, as you see on the top of this table. So under the cost-sharing formula, the federal government provides 65% of that, or roughly 737,000. So the city in total is obligated to provide the balance, which is just under 400,000. Now fortunately, we do have a state grant from Boating and Waterways under their beach restoration program. That's 281,000, as you see. So that really leaves our bottom line cash contribution, if you will, from city general funds at about 116,000. And those funds are available and budgeted per your prior direction and you included some funds in the current fiscal year budget. So we have in total our funding share to meet that total 35%, most of which, which comes from the state grant. So with that, I'll answer any other questions you may have about the recommendation.
This is a single one-time expense, not a reoccurring expense?
Well, that, that's the intent, yes, but if project costs change or increase, then we'd have to come back to you, but the idea is, this is, this is the total omen.
We have a one-time design cost, but then if implemented, we have the replenishment every six years.
Oh, yeah, sorry, right. Once we move out of this phase, we would entertain a different cost-sharing agreement, a whole different plan for the actual construction.
Project itself.
And this would be done.
However, we wouldn't have to be doing the design every six years and having to come up with 116 or whatever it is at that time. Or whatever.
We wouldn't be doing design, but if there's monitoring or anything else that has to come out of that in future phases, we would get into that, but right now, that isn't part of any plan. Right?
Well, Tom, the important number to me is, I mean, this is, this is a design number, 116,000, but should we choose to go ahead when we get the design back? This is a couple of years out. If we're, the total number for the city's $4 million here, but we got grants for about 3.4 million to bring the city's total share down to about 600,000, according to your report. If we go ahead with this design phase cost-sharing and these grants don't come through, so the city's bill will then turn out to be 4 million for this project, can we then say we can't afford it?
First of all, let me be clear, just for people watching, the numbers we're talking about now have nothing to do with the slide up. We're now talking about construction that was in the report and so.
Yeah, we're on page two now.
And the construction phase, you're correct, our share now estimated, our total city share would be 4 million, of which we have at this point a firm commitment from the state for 3.4 million. And in a future council meeting within the next month or two, we'll present that actual agreement to execute, which will reserve the funds. But I think the answer to the question you're asking, if we don't get those, and what would happen is we would need to provide that at the beginning of the project, so the project wouldn't even happen unless it's prepaid upfront, so we would know if we're going to have the state funding or not. And if it doesn't come through, we wouldn't do the project. Or if at some point in the future, we do it once, we're not obligated to keep doing this for 50 years, it's sort of a one-and-done, and then if we decide, for whatever reason, we can't afford it, don't like it, didn't work, we're not obligated to keep repeating this for the next 50-year project life. Does that answer your question?
That does answer my question and I'm glad it's coming in a month because it's, we've been talking about this for, you've been talking about it for longer than all of us have, but it's, it's, it seems like we, there is a small light at the end of this tunnel and the bad part that jumped out at me in that, the first real report that I read was that we're going to put down 15 meters of sand, about 50 feet, and the first year, they estimated we would lose 13 feet of that. That really jumped out at me and in this design phase, I'm going to be very interested to see whether that's still in there, whether that's still a factor. They've got, that was about four years ago that that report was done. I'm sure they've done more testing and monitoring and have more data, or is that still the data?
That's still the data in terms of the shoreline profile and the modeling and the predicted erosion rates on what we expect to happen, but part of this phase will be doing all the pre-construction monitoring and then we'll do profiling after to see what's actually occurred and if that prediction, how close to reality it was.
Well, how are some of the recent projects done further to the south? How have they done? Have they lost 13 feet in the first year?
Well, they were different to the parameters.
I get that.
But in general, it is expected and it does happen where, when you have an artificial fill, you will lose a not insignificant portion right up front.
I understand that, but were there, and the numbers are all different for all beach, the different beaches, but were their estimates accurate? I mean, did somebody say, we're going to lose 10 feet and they lost one foot? One foot? Did, we're going to lose ten feet, and they lost thirty feet?
That I can't answer off the top of my head, but we can contact those folks and look in those reports and see, because they have a longer-running history on those projects, so we can probably find that out.
When the, when the big-money, uh, uh, stamp of approval comes up, I'll be very interested to know, I'll, I'll be very interested to have more data in that regard.
Okay, sure.
I, I also am, and would be interested, as part of the design summary, is that our expectation is, is that that sand will be distributed down in the San Clemente shoreline, so whatever's replenished here will be pushed and reallocated in other areas, too. Um, I, you know, as part of our design phase, is that what we're looking at here? Is this really just our distribution of T Street, and we hope that it's going to be distributed downward? As part of the design, are we going to be looking at what, what might be a, another benefit, uh, to our shoreline along the, the beach?
Our focus is that reach between, um, Linda Lane and, and South T Street, um, but all the modeling and, and the understanding of the shoreline processes is that there is a net southward latoral sand transport, uh, we, we know that, and we've seen that for years, that, that's the net direction, and so where the sand moves is offshore and basically down coast or south coast, and so we even saw a little bit of that when we did the small North Beach project, our lifeguards observed that, you know, it appeared to them there were, there were pulses of sand moving south through the system past the pier, so that's where we expect it to go, before it gets lost out of our immediate area.
Okay. It's all questions I'm sure that will be part of, uh, the, the actual presentation.
Somebody want to make a motion there?
Yeah.
Uh, I move that we approve and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for design of the San Clemente Shoreline Beach Standard Replenishment Project Contract Number C sixteen dash forty-eight, to approve and authorize the city manager to execute related documents and certifications as may be needed during the design phase, provided they do not involve increases to the approved design phase budget. Three, approve and authorize the city treasurer to execute the design phase financial self-certification form. Four, approve and authorize the city attorney to execute the certificate of authority form.
Motion by hand, second by Brown, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passing unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonniget.
Next is a report from the Public Works Director, City Engineer.
Why don't we take about, why don't we take about, uh, till twenty of?
Okay.
We'll just take a, take a short break here. All right?[761.23]
Alright folks, welcome back and we will call the meeting to order once again.
And the next item relates to establishment of a speed limit on West Avenue Vista Hermosa.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight to give a real brief presentation on the item. And basically, when you have a new roadway, or a major change in characteristics of a roadway, we need to complete, the city needs to complete a speed survey to determine the speed limit for that road segment. So with this new roadway opening up, before we could really have enforcement actions placed, we had to complete this speed survey. So we went out and we conducted the speed survey, and the eighty-fifth percentile, which is how you establish the speed limit, was forty-six miles an hour. The state law provides for a five mile an hour increment, given the conditions of the adjacent land use and the conditions of the roadway. So we actually used that section of the state law, and we lowered the eighty-fifth percentile of speed, or the speed limit from forty-five miles an hour to forty miles per hour. So with that, we're recommending the actions in front of you tonight in our recommendations, which is a speed limit of forty miles per hour.
Any questions for Tom? I got a couple. You got a question?
Yeah, Tom, I thought we did something very similar to this, what, a year and a half ago?
Not for this road segment. We've done it in the past for changed conditions. I think we, last time we did one, we looked at Pico between El Camino Real and Los Molinos.
We didn't do a different segment of Hermosa?
We did, we did the other side of Hermosa, yeah.
Right, inland of I-5, right?
Yes, and I haven't gotten a ticket there yet. Kathy, you got a question?
As soon as this is passed, how soon will the signs go up and enforcement? I have never asked that, I just wanted to ask.
As soon as we can get a stamped sign copy in front of the, I believe it's the recorder's office, so that when, yeah, it goes to court, that they have something that they can hold up in front of them and say that we've done the speed survey.
Well, Tom, I have a couple of questions. When you say existing conditions of the surrounding land use, what are you talking about there? Are you talking about all the traffic going into the mall up there?
Well, we're talking about, like, in this case, we have a nearby school or an adjacent school and park, and then we also have the retail center and also the residential area. So we believe because of the pedestrian uses along that roadway and the school and the park, it justifies that lower speed limit, a five mile an hour lower speed limit.
Okay. And how about traffic signal synchronization that we've done on a lot of places of town very successfully? Any plans to do that here?
Yes, there is. We actually have the interconnect in place. So the reason why we're not having our signals interconnected throughout that corridor right now is because of the Caltrans I-5 HOV improvement project. But once that's complete, we'll be able to synchronize that entire corridor.
Not until the project's complete, though.
That phase, I think there's another six months to eight months left of Phase Two.
Okay, alright, thanks. Anybody else? Is there a motion out there? Got it?
So with that move, we accept engineering and traffic survey for West Avenue Vista Hermosa from Interstate Five to Avenue Pico West, and establish a forty mile an hour speed limit on this street. Introduce ordinance number sixteen thirty-one entitled ordinance of the City Council of San Clemente, California, amending Chapter Ten of the missile code concerning speed zones on West Avenue Vista Hermosa.
Second.
Motion by Hamm, second by Ward. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Pass the unanimous. Thank you, Mayor, very much, Tom.
Next item on the agenda is report from the city clerk concerning sufficiency of the initiative petition for election of city council members by district. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the registrar of voters has verified that the initiative that was circulated in the city relating to election of city council members by district has received sufficient signatures to qualify. State law provides that if a petition contains signatures representing ten percent but less than fifteen percent of the registered voters of the city, which is the case with this particular initiative, the council shall take one of the following three actions. First, council could adopt the ordinance without alteration at the regular meeting at which the certification of the petition is presented, that's today, or within ten days after presentation. The method for electing council members is established by voters upon incorporation. Because of that, the city attorney has opined that it is unclear whether council has the ability under ordinary elections code procedures to adopt the initiative ordinance without voter approval. That being said, the city attorney is confident that council could adopt the initiative without voter approval under new authority provided under the California Voting Rights Act, which is intended to avoid the dilution of voting rights of a protected minority group. If council wishes to adopt the ordinance without submitting it to the voters, staff recommends that council adopt the ordinance that is included in your agenda packet, which includes a declaration that the initiative is being adopted in furtherance of the provisions of the California Voting Rights Act. The second alternative available to council is to submit the ordinance without alteration to the voters at the next regular election of November eighth, 2016. If council wishes to pursue this option, the County of Orange must be in receipt of council's resolution to add the measure to the November 2016 ballot by close of business on August twelfth. The city attorney has proposed the following ballot question in the event council chooses to submit the initiative to the voters, and that is, shall the ordinance be adopted to change the manner in which city council members are elected from at-large to by district, to establish a task force to recommend district boundaries, and to require a special election if the city council does not adopt the task force's recommendation? The third option available to council is to order a report pursuant to Elections Code Section ninety-two twelve. If council selects this option, the report must be presented to council within thirty days of this meeting. When the report is presented to council, council must either adopt the ordinance within ten days, or submit the initiative for election at the city's next regular election occurring not less than eighty-eight days after the date of the order of election. If council takes action to submit the initiative to the voters after August twelfth, 2016, the measure would be added to the general municipal election ballot of November sixth, 2018. This concludes staff's presentation. Now I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Alright, who's got a question for Joanne?
Joanne, what would happen if more than fifteen percent of the registered voters of the city signed it? Does that change the options in front of us?
If there were, if fifteen percent of the voters signed, and if the initiative included a request for a special election, that would have triggered the requirement for a special election, instead of just going to the next general election.
I see.
Other than that, the options are the same.
So if you get fifteen percent of the registered voters, then you, and it's part of the actual
Request.
Request, then you would do a special election, which would happen, what, in the off years, or you would have to schedule that during a certain time, or how would that work?
It would have to be within a certain time.
Okay.
I got a question for the city attorney. Option one there, Scott, how do you tie that to the Voting Rights Act? Is there a protected class here that I'm not seeing?
There doesn't have to be. The Voting Rights Act just includes a new provision that without any other question, the council can adopt an ordinance to this effect.
I thought the Voting Rights Act was specifically for, you know, disenfranchised voters that were a protected class. Well, that's not...
That's, Mayor and council, that is the stated purpose of the act, but it provides, without regard to specific findings, the platform that I mentioned. But yeah, the underlying intent of the act is to further and enhance minority voice in voting.
Okay. Well, nobody's got any questions. I guess we'll, I'm assuming we got a couple of cards on this. Okay, thank you. Alright, we'll hear from Brad Malamud, Jim Bieber, John Schwartz, and then Dan Bain.
And I'm sorry I missed, Scott, did you discuss the report? I missed that part. I was outside. Okay, so are you going to, before we speak?
Mr. Malamud, this is for council, comments to the council.
Yeah, yeah, it's time for you to...
It's not Q and A with the city attorney.
Okay, so I'm speaking as the applicant, so I plan on taking most of my ten minutes. With respect to this district election, I want to tell you that I proposed this and started it not with respect to any of you. It wasn't personal, it wasn't with respect to VRBO, it wasn't with respect to sober living, it wasn't with respect to signage, it was with respect to street partying. I've lived here twenty years, I just want a local representative. None of you live in my area, and for twenty years, only one person, Joe Anderson, I know has ever lived in my area. And then Talega doesn't have representation, Forest Ranch doesn't have representation. Let the voters decide. And that's what I'm asking you to do tonight, is let the voters decide. I believe this hearing, if the ruling comes down the way it is, is being held in bad faith. Let me tell you, since you won't let the city attorney do what, the due process violations that go on tonight are just absurd. But on June thirteenth, the council requested a white paper. That white paper, by definition, is a nine-two-one-two report. Kathy Ward even spoke that and said, "I'm not going to pay attention to that paper on the second," which is today. I am going to tell you, the city mayor, the city attorney is going to tell you that it wasn't a nine-two-one-two report, and therefore didn't start the clock running. However, I will tell you this, and this is why it's not true. If the city council made that same request tonight, and it was passed by the council, and asked your firm for the same report, that would be a nine-two-one-two report. And you don't have to ask for a nine-two-one-two report. All you have to do is fulfill the requirements of Section nine-two-one-two. The city attorney can address that. It is number eight of those reports, there are eight or nine reports that you can request, and one of them is a report of any other issue. Well, you asked to discuss districting. The city provided it to you, yet the city has not provided it to us. They've claimed privilege on it. That document cannot be privileged. There's nothing they could have, the city attorney told you that could be privileged. It scares me that, in fact, the city's taking privilege on it. So, that being the case, under nine-two-one-two, when the report is presented to legislative body, the legislative body shall exercise either adopting the ordinance within ten days, or an election pursuant to subdivision B. I was told by Mr. Matchinoff, that report was presented to this council more than ten days ago. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Therefore, that white paper is a nine-two-one-two report. It was presented to the council, and the council chose not to call a special meeting and vote to either adopt the ordinance or to put it on the ballot. Because they didn't, only one thing is left under the statute nine-two-one-five, and that is that this initiative must be put on the ballot on November two thousand and sixteen. The council has actually no options tonight because the ten-day period ran. And therefore, like I said, what really troubles me is that the city attorney would actually argue that that white paper is not a nine-two-one-two report. There is no way in the world that's possible, because the council made an action. Now, even if the council didn't know they were requesting a nine-two-one-two report, that doesn't change the fact that it was a nine-two-one-two report. Look at the definition under nine-two-one-two. Read it to the council, city attorney, and you'll see that that report did qualify. Number two, it was presented to the council. Therefore, that's the only two requirements to trigger the ten-day statute. Nine-two-one-five says, "When the report is presented legislative body, legislative body shall either adopt the ordinance within ten days."
Brad, have you got some other points to make besides this white paper?
I have ten minutes to speak, I have ten minutes to speak as the applicant. So I will say what I want.
Who says you have ten minutes to speak? Where did I hear about that?
If you read, if you read under number seven, on the agenda says, "The applicant has ten minutes to speak."
City clerk, did we discuss that at all, or is Mr. Malamud applying for anything?
I applied for initiative to the city. It was signed by the city clerk who followed through with the city. So I am the applicant. If you look at her report, her staff report, it says, "Brad Malamud requested it." That's an applicant. If you look up the word applicant, it says somebody who requests. We don't need to get much deeper than that, Bob.
You got any ideas?
Yeah, Mayor, as I've understood that policy, an applicant is a person with a real estate interest, a land use interest. The additional time is meant to protect their property interests, and that's why the rule's different. It's not the person requesting a grant or a matter like this. It's not just...
Brad, I'm going to... Let me read you, real quickly, Bob. No, let me read you, number seven, public hearing. The public hearing process includes staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed ten minutes. These are your rules, not mine. It doesn't say anything about real property.
And Brad, if you would listen for one second, the man just told you, you're not an applicant. You're talking about an applicant.
He said it applies to real estate. This is your own rules. Read your rules tonight. It says nothing about real estate.
Brad, I am willing to allow you some latitude here, but you've made the same point for your whole three minutes here. Now, if you've got some other points, I'd like to hear them. If you have some other points, please let us have them. If you've got the same point to make...
Fair enough, fair enough. I was trying to be expeditious. I skipped two pages of this already. So let me, so let me...
You made the same point for three minutes.
Hey, Bob, you guys went on for an hour often times repeating the same things. That's what people do. Let me speak as quickly as possible, okay, and try to get it done, okay? Ninety-two-one-two also says, "A legislative body may further propose initiative for a report, one." You've had a report. You're not entitled tonight to request...
Brad, this is the same point. Is there another point?
It's a different point, Bob. With all due respect, if you'll listen, the report that you requested means you can't tonight request another report. This is different than the fact that you already requested one. You don't have the right tonight to adopt another ninety-two point, ninety-two-one-two report, because that would delay. I also want to suggest something to you. The point of a ninety-two-one-two report, and we don't know if you're even going to ask for one, I asked the city manager if you were going to seek a delay to two thousand and eighteen. And I want to clarify that if this is delayed tonight, it will be two thousand and eighteen, not a special report, as been reported some places. That it is a device, that ninety-two-one-two was not designed as a device to delay an election, okay? And I would hope the city council, even if the city attorney says they have the right to seek a report and delay the election for two years, realizes that the democratic process is something that we should push this on the current election for the people who signed to be able to vote in November. And if they lose, that's fine. The further point on that is that there is nothing that you will request tonight, as far as if you request special report, that would change anybody's mind here about adopting this report. And remember, the purpose of a ninety-two-one-two report is whether the council should adopt the initiative, so there's no vote, or place it in front of these citizens so they could vote on it. The purpose is not to delay. And there is no reason why, having already asked for a report before, that this council would ask for another report.
Brad, you're continuing to make the same point over and over.
No, I'm not. I have now talked about, Bob, I just mentioned the point that even if you have the legal right to do it, that you should turn it down because the only purpose would be delay, okay? That has nothing to do with the legal point. I think that's about all I want to say, except I do want to say this about it, and that is, please let the voters decide in November of two thousand and sixteen. Allow the voters to decide, not me or the council. Thank you.
Jim Bieber.
Neighbors. If you look at the map there, you can see where I live, and that's eight-oh-five South Ola Vista, and a shout-out to my wife and children who are likely, or most likely at home watching me on YouTube. That's where I live, and it's kind of a cool neighborhood because I live in the council zone. About four weeks ago, I'm walking back from Ralph's, and I see Bob in your snazzy Corvette parked in front of Councilman Brown's house as I'm walking back, and I see the fetching Mrs. Brown coming out to say hi to you, and I think, well, I could stop there and tell him about the progress of how the initiative count is going and the petition counts, and I go, meh, I'll just keep walking on. I had the opportunity to write a letter to Chris Hamm about the wisdom of having a sobriety checkpoint in front of the high school within a month. He's riding his bike in front of my house, and I get to chit-chat and talk to him. And it's kind of cool to be living in the council zone. There's an interesting item in the paper that, and congratulations for doing an outreach program. Mayor schedules a third outreach in Talega. Outreach programs are defined as an attempt to address people who have been and/or are currently disenfranchised, who needs to be involved in the political structure. So that's great, you know, you're reaching out. My next-door neighbor, I know that you paid them a visit about a week ago, giving them the history breakdown of their house, and that the occupants prior to them living there were friends of yours, and you requested that they put in a sign, one of your campaign signs. And they said, eh, we'll pass on it. They didn't buy, they didn't want your sign. And you left a business card for them. And what you said is, "Here's my business card. I like doing favors and helping out my neighbors." And that's nice, good for you. So if you live in the council zone, you'll have the mayor walking around, meeting with you, giving him your business card. If you live out in Talega, you get an outreach program. So that's our team. One other thing, Ms. Ward, you said that, "I didn't know that one team, one town" was the slogan for the high school. My son has played three different sports there. I understand clearly what that means. When you...
Apparently not.
Well, apparently, when you said in your article that was all about districting, it was all about how districting would harm your attempt to govern, it had nothing to do with the high school. You know, I think it would be easier for you to climb a tree than to tell the truth and do something ethical. When you said, you spoke to people who had signed the petition, they said they only signed it to put it on the ballot. They didn't understand what they were signing. They only signed it to put it on the ballot. And then later on tonight, you're going to vote not to put it on the ballot, even though those are the people who supposedly you talked to who said they only signed it to put it on the ballot. It's bizarre. I don't understand why you're so afraid of the public. Councilman Brown, several times you said you'll respect the will of the public, you're not afraid of the public, they'll decide it, and yet you're going to try and monkey around and not put it on the ballot.
John, I have a card from Mr. Schwartz who says, "I do not wish to speak, but my question is on the back." And the question is, if the district issue passes, and in a district who elects council members in two thousand and sixteen, can someone else run in that same district in two thousand and eighteen, even though that council member term does not end till 2020? Will, somebody will call you tomorrow, Mr. Schwartz. Did you leave your phone number? No, you didn't leave your phone number on here. Leave your phone number with the, you can do that now, Joanne? Alright, go ahead.
No, council members' terms would be shortened if this initiative were to pass. So the council members elected in two thousand and sixteen would serve a full four-year term. If the initiative were to pass, it would, the districting would be phased as the terms expire.
Thank you. Brad, sorry, not Brad, Dan Bain.
Good evening, Mayor Baker, council members, Dan Bain, San Clemente resident. A lot of you know that I'm running for city council this year. I've put my money where my mouth is. I was involved with the districting effort. A lot of acrimony. I don't come with this council acrimony. I didn't do this for personal reasons. I've lived in the city for eight years, all that time in Talega. I've wanted representation, that's why I applied for the planning commissioner, and Councilmember Baker, I think that's why you appointed me at the planning commission. I've known Councilmember Brown from my time on the GPAC, and also Councilmember Hamm. I think they know the character that I have, and why I've been serving the city in the capacities that I have. And one of the concerns that I have, that the council is going to take action tonight to adopt a report, that's going to delay this vote for two years. And the question that I have is, what do we need to study in this report? If you look at the code, and what the code looks at, the first part's fiscal. We know what this is going to cost. It's going to cost nothing, because the election's already going to be had. The remaining aspects are land use planning issues, which this is not going to impact in any way. So it really leaves two options. One of those options I know this council's not going to take, which is to just adopt this measure and break the city up into voting districts, and that's fine. I've seen, most of you on the dais have made comments publicly. I know that you're not for the districting effort, and that's understandable and perfectly fine. I hope that we get a chance to have a debate in a public forum about the good aspects and the bad aspects of districting. But that debate needs to be had. We got the requisite signatures in fifty-seven days. We had a hundred and eighty days to get those signatures. And Councilmember Brown, you asked, you know, if we would have had fifteen percent of the vote, would this even, this discussion even be happening tonight? It wouldn't. And the reason that we didn't have the fifteen percent is because we tried to do in sixty days what we had a hundred and eighty days to do. So my ask is not, you know, let's argue about the merits of this petition. We can do that. And Councilmember Ward, we haven't met yet. Nice to meet you. We might have met at a planning commission interview, but that was some time ago. And I have no animosity towards anyone on this council. Frankly, I respect the work that you guys have done. I appreciate the time that you guys have served. I've been there, it's a thankless job. Some would ask, why am I asking for the same job? But I represent an aspect of the community that is disenfranchised, that does want to be heard, that does want representation on the council. And the concern that I have is that you'll miss an opportunity yet again to give those people a voice, to let them decide, should this go to districting or shouldn't it? And I will respect the vote either way. I don't, frankly, it doesn't matter to me if they vote yes or not. I want the discussion to be had. If people agree with me that districts are a good option, then we should do that. This is a presidential election. We're going to have a record outpouring of voting. This is the time to have this discussion. Thank you.
Bernie Wolfar. First of all, thanks for letting me address you. I wasn't going to say anything, but the question came up, why do another study? I was approached by multiple people at multiple different grocery stores to sign the petition, and I was given false information, and I know I'm not alone. And I feel like the study might be able to help me get the right information. And if you were to do a study and then present it, I feel like, you know what, the ten percent that you got, if they really wanted to sign on for it, then great. And maybe I'll sign on for it. But it just seems to me that since there was false information given out for the petition, that the ten percent might not be a real number, and the potential of a study to sort of clear up what this is all about is a good option. So I'd like you to consider that. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Alright, anybody else like to speak about this? Alright, seeing nobody else, then we'll deliberate here as a council. Who would like to start? Kathy, want to start? You ready to go?
Well, I think we should take them like one at a time. Just talk about one option at a time. It's just a consideration.
I think we can just deliberate on them as a whole. I don't think we need to take them one at a time.
You know, and here's the thing. So let's take a look at this. I mean, I've received a lot of calls about this, particularly when a lot of petition gatherers were circulating, and folks were asking, what is this about? You know, what is the issue? What is it? Why is this happening? What's going on in our city? What is this districting question? Should I sign it? Should I not sign it? I was also approached for, to sign the petition. I didn't. Just so we're all on the same page about how interested I was. But what was more intriguing to me was, is that in circulating petition, it created more questions than it did answers. There wasn't a point where, you know, obviously petition gatherers have a message, they have an interest, and so they're going to be presenting a message that will obviously resonate. And people did, they signed off on it, which is, you know, one side of it. But, you know, there is another side to the issue, which is our current form of governance, which has not been deliberated at all. And I made that... And we, I made that choice. When Councilwoman Doncheck came before this council and said, I wanna agendaize this item, I didn't think there was a public appetite, and so I said, well, we'll wait and see if you can gather the signatures. We gathered the signatures, then we'll chat about it. So this is our opportunity to chat about it. One of the things that is not conclusive...
You know what, Tim, let me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I like to hear from the city attorney here before we get too deep into this, because it is a ballot measure, and maybe the city attorney could give us some guidance as to how far we can go. Can we say, I love this, or I hate this, or how should we proceed here?
Oh, yeah, thanks, Mayor and council. I think the question is, is whether you're qualified to vote on this because you've taken a position on it. And, and the answer to that is that this is a legislative decision, it's not a quasi-adjudicatory decision, and so you're entitled to have positions and strong positions on it, on and off the record, and, and to vote on it. That's, I think it's presumed that elected officials are gonna have an opinion about how elections occur in their city. So thanks for asking about that, but that, that is a somewhat preposterous assertion that you couldn't have an opinion on a legislative decision when you come here to vote on it.
Okay. And, and one more question, I'm sorry...
Well, as a follow-up to that, let me, let me just, let me ask a question more quick here than Bob. As a question on that, one of the things that happened that Councilwoman Doncheck asked for was, at the time when she asked to bring for counsel, we weren't interested in chatting about it, because frankly, it was something that I didn't see any public appetite for. You did have 10% of the voters that signed off on the initiative. Subsequently, in a meeting in June, she asked for a white paper, she asked for a white paper on the council manic district. I don't, the specific quest, I don't recall, certainly wasn't, you know, a council voted direction for, but she asked for the white paper, which she provided. And then Brad is basically saying, this is the report, and that we don't really have any options, those have already passed. I just want, if it's okay, I wanna get that addressed, because if we don't have any options, it's important to know that now, as opposed to having to, you know, meander around this.
That's a related issue, Bob.
That's exactly my question, exactly, yeah.
Okay, yeah, thanks a lot. The, the meeting referred to by Mr. Malmont was June 13th, 2016, and the theory is that at that meeting, the council already took action to order a report and present it, and that somehow that, that's already occurred, and, and that gun's been fired, and, and can't be again. The minutes of that meeting are the official record of the meeting. Our individual recollections really don't count once the council approves minutes. And here's what they say. "Under council comments, Councilmember Doncheck requested the city attorney provide counsel with a white paper that describes the different types of governance options for cities with council members that are elected by districts." That was, was the excerpt from the minutes. There was no reference, well, A, there was no notice of a council action under the election code. There was no vote by the council to order a report under the election code. There was no report back given to the council on that. There, that, that was it. And so I, I think that it is a huge stretch to conclude that, that request by a single council member constituted action by the legislative body to order a report and to present it under the election code. I, you get to decide whether that counted as, as a council, but I think that is just reading way too much between the lines of that council member's comment on, on that date.
Can I correct the record? The transcript shows that Bob asked you, you weren't here, Mr. Richardson was, if the city attorney could prepare it, and he said, then allow the city attorney to prepare it. So I mean, I would do is watch it.
Brad, are you going to continually interrupt the proceedings here? Are you going to continually interrupt the proceedings?
I have the right to make a point of order.
Are you going to continually interrupt the proceedings?
Under 6.2.3 of your own rules of procedure, I asked that I be able to speak. I asked the mayor to be able to speak. That's the proper way to do it. Okay, then I asked for a voice, then I asked for a majority of the council to vote whether I can speak or not.
Let's vote on whether Brad can speak or not.
Okay, please, let's do it.
I see no need to vote. Please sit down.
I get a vote under your own rules of each of the council members.
We just voted.
I didn't, I only heard one vote.
No.
We're not calling.
No, no.
There's no calling for a vote. Please sit down.
Mayor, if I, this is, this is your prerogative, but I think this is a good point in the movie, in the meeting, to indicate that public comment on this item has come and gone, that more public comments are out of order and constitute an illegal violation of the California Penal Code, which prohibits interruptions of lawfully held public meetings. So talking now from the audience is prohibited, and I, I, you would need to validate that, but that's, that's the scores, as I see it.
Thank you. I'll finish my point.
Thank you.
Which was, I was trying to make, right? The fact of the matter is, we've had a system of governance in San Clemente, which is at-large elections for almost 100 years in our city history. That's no small thing. And in each election, you've had the opportunity to vote for people located all over our city, right? Sometimes three, sometimes two, but always a diverse set of candidates every time, right? When I see the allegations of, you know, of we've got this concentration, other items, it takes a point in time that is so extremely narrow when you look at the broad expanse of our electoral and political history, and then you take a six-month or a one-year window in which it happens to be that a council member moves into a new house that's close to the neighborhood here. And somehow, we had an election where there was a concentration in a certain area. Well, you take that small sampling and you try it across the broad, you try and apply it across a broad experience, it makes no sense. Even, even Brad made the point that Joe Anderson was elected for how many years? 16 years on our council from his neighborhood, right? You've had different folks, and more importantly, candidates from all over the city every year which have stood up to say, I wanna run, or every couple of years to step up and say, I wanna run, three and two, three and two. Now, some may say that's not an effective form of voting, but I gotta tell you something, San Clemente is a great place. We're well, we're well-run, we're in the black. We have our challenges, no doubt about it. But before I turn the entire way that we run our city and how we get our elected officials upside down, I'd like to take some time to reevaluate whether or not the inequities exist that are alleged in this petition, right? Measure twice, cut once. What is it that we're in such a hurry for that we have to push this thing through in this November election? I'd rather have the report. I wanna understand exactly what is the distribution of council members over the past 20 years, maybe even 30 years? Have we had these inequities the whole time? What about the candidates who have run? Have they always been concentrated, right? Then the third part of that is, is what would be the natural byproduct or impact on our minority communities? The whole Voting Rights Act was designed to protect their interests. Are we gonna be disenfranchising them in council manic, in district elections? There's a whole series of questions that have not been answered, that have not been asked by this council, that should be asked for and that the public deserves. Believe me, the public has not received any of this context because frankly, it wasn't timely to provide those answers. Now we can provide those answers, and people can make that vote in the light of the day. If it happens this November, if it happens in November two years ago, they'll have their voice, they'll have their say. And you know what you'll also have? Is five council members during that same time whom you'll be able to elect on this council, right? We just had a planning commission, we have two folks from Forrester Ranch who put on a planning commission, BPNR. You know what I really like about this city is most of the time, we don't really ask the questions about where you live. Do you live in town? Great, let's make some decisions. I like that. Do we really need to pick them out from different areas? I guess so. If that's what people wanna do, that's fine. But I think that we oughta have both eyes wide open, looking at exactly what the facts are, and have that information available so that the public can make a good choice for how we're gonna govern our city. I'm not willing to be able to say, it doesn't matter what we've done for 90 years of existence, let's just go ahead and do this because a few folks are really upset. No, I think we oughta take our time, I think we need to make sure this is done right, and that the report is completed, and that it's comprehensive, and the public can look to it and say, what exactly are we dealing with here? Let me tell you.
Tim, you know, I'm gonna take a little bit of what you said, 'cause I think I share some of your concerns with the minority votes in town, and I have a slightly different perspective in that earlier this year, I was threatened litigation here at city council by Mr. Bieber over the Voting Rights Act. And he said, in his threats, that he would enforce the Voting Rights Act, enforce the community to go to district elections because of the Voters' Right Act. And I think, once he did a little research and found that there wasn't as large a minority group in our community as he thought initially, he decided to take a different route. And he's presented multiple council meetings, saying that he was one of the initial distributors of the petition, and then once he realized that probably wasn't best suited to have his name attached to it, I think he sought out a different suitor, and that was Brad. My concern moving forward is, with the same concerns that he had, which is just what you pointed out this evening, is that potentially, we could be disillusioning minority voters in our community by segregating districts out, because I think we do have a very geographically unique setup in terms of where the minorities in our community live. And so that's my biggest concern, and I think that's what we need to ask staff to address in this study, and as well as other seven points listed in the study, to see actually what we will be voting on as a community. And I think we will be voting on it soon enough. So I'm gonna support the study as well.
I haven't, I hadn't made up my mind until, you know, I'm listening to the rest of you. You know, this is a hard decision to make. I do realize 10% of the people signed it, and normally I would say, you know, they knew what they were signing, but unfortunately, I had a lot of people come to me, friends of mine, that said, we signed something, we don't know what it was, what was it? And I told them, it was to change the way we vote in San Clemente to where a representative of council would be from each, every, every area. And they said, why would you wanna do that? And I said, well, that's what they want, that's what people are asking. So based on what I've heard and the arguments of council, I agree, I think that there are a lot of questions that I would like answered before, and I don't think the public has been able to have that, because this was not a consideration, as Councilman Brown said. But I would ask, do we have to tonight state, Joanne, what we are going to ask in the report? Okay. All right, so I will support that, based on what the council member said and what I've heard from the public.
Well, I heard a lot about, you know, the neighborhoods in San Clemente need representative. Laura, would you do me a favor? Can you get us on the, on Google here? Can, can we do that on the, on the screen? No, not, not the maps, just, just Google, just Google search, and I want you to search for San Clemente neighborhoods. Okay, San Clemente neighborhoods, let's say, is there some real estate at, there we go, right there. Click on that, let's see how many neighborhoods are in San Clemente. Page down there on the right side, I think we're gonna have to enlarge the city council chambers. Scroll down a little bit more there, over on the right side, there's all the San Clemente neighborhoods right there. Let's start counting, one, two, keep going, keep scrolling. Those are San Clemente neighborhoods. And so if every neighborhood in San Clemente would like to have a representative, I think it's a wonderful idea, but we're, we're gonna need a bigger building. So I think we should allocate, start allocating funds for that construction as soon as possible. The, I was trying to inject some humor in that, I thought it was pretty funny myself. But frankly, I take a little different tack, because I was quoted in the paper saying, this is the dumbest idea I've ever heard of. I really, I still believe that. However, I think it's time to squash this thing, because it is a dumb idea. And I frankly would look forward to having this on the ballot this November, because when the truth comes out about it, it doesn't have a chance. The voters are smart, they see through this kinda stuff. This still is a dumb idea, but I still think we oughta put it on the ballot and, and vote on it, and show it for what it is, because it doesn't have a chance of passing.
There's, there's no doubt it's, listen, it's gonna go on a ballot, and one of the items is important, is if people sign the petition, they have the right to be able to have their voices heard on this. But they also have the right to understand everything about this, right? This is a long conversation, and one of the things I have a real problem with is, well, you know, we, we obviously, I mean, the timeliness of it is that, you know, at every single point, this could've been done a year ago, it could've been done a year and a half ago, it could've done everything in preparation for this point, it could've gotten 15%, and then the choice had been out of us. But one of the challenges I have with this here is that we have to hurry, it has to happen, it's so urgent here, but before, I don't know, January, December this year, never heard a single San Clemente, not a single San Clemente resident come to me and said, we oughta really go to district elections, right? And so I, you know, if this is something the community wants to go to, let's have that conversation, let's move that direction, let's chat with the candidates about it, let's feel, and you know what? In my mind, what's going to happen is, you're going to see a different set of candidates can make this entire issue moot, not only in, in this election, but in the election to come. So I think this is a part of a conversation we need to have, I think we need to have report. Before we have a motion on this, though, I want the report to cover some items, is that one of the things that's important to me, more than geographical location, I think there's an important demographical component. We have had in years past a certain demographic component of our councils in terms of sex, age, and then also location, business interests, other things like that. Are we looking only on geographical location? Are we looking at other demographic considerations in terms of age, ethnicity, and other considerations that should be made on this? I think that when you're talking about a diversification of what this council should be, I think you oughta look at all factors involved here. We have the youngest council person, and how long to be on, on the council right now. We have two women for the first time in a long time, and so these are all the considerations that I think the, that we oughta be able to look at in a report like this.
Senior citizens, you wanna bring those up?
Well, you know, Bob, I didn't wanna say anything, but you are old. Anyway, but this is, this is my take, is if it's the right thing to do, then the voters will vote for it, and they will, they'll put it on the ballot, and they'll recognize that. It's just going to be a matter of the conversation, the reports and everything we're gonna have, and we'll have a long conversation about it before the people be able to vote for it. And my hope is, we'll all be very informed when it, when it does come on the ballot.
Well, I'm gonna move option three with everything that Councilman Brown listed.
I would like to add some questions to that report. I'd like it to find what the voting rights are under the California Voter Act. What is San Clemente's demographics? It's kind of what Mayor, Councilman Brown said. Is there an identifiable, underrepresented minority group in San Clemente? Does a current legal reason exist to change San Clemente from at-large elections to by district? Joanne, I'll give you a copy of this. What are the consequences to changing voting patterns in our city? If that is able to be answered. How could a district election structure put a strain on the management of this city? How many representatives would a resident have? How many council members represent citizens now, currently? What is the cost, the city cost, to change election system to by districts? Do district boundary lines have to be changed periodically when population changes and the demographic moves? Is that a significant cost to the city? I would like to know that, and I think the residents should know if there's any ongoing costs to these type of elections. I also would like to know, with the questions under Election Code 9212, I would like number two, number three, number four, as regards to schools, number seven, as regards to traffic congestion and parking, especially on streets west of I-5, and, and east of I-5, in our older areas that were built prior, up to the 70s. And number, well, I don't have to say number eight, but I would like all those questions answered in context to if our vacation rental, our STLU ordinance was overturned. What would those impacts be? And I think I can ask that as number eight, any other matters the legislative body requests to be in the report. That's what I would like to see, and I think we should add anything that we think the San Clemente residents need to know in order to vote on this.
Let me make this motion then, because I...
Let me add something that we, that we've missed here. One point we've missed is, this is a common way to operate. One point we've missed is, this is a common way to operate in large cities. This is how New York and Chicago and San Francisco and Anaheim work. I'm, I'm wondering if you're going to, if you're going to vote for this report, that should be part of it, to talk about small cities, successes and failures with it, large cities. I guess all do it. So, some, something, I'm not even sure what the, what the question would be, but, but James, do you have any thoughts on that? Because it is a large city way to operate, isn't it?
I think it's the way that large cities do tend to operate, but there are examples of small cities that operate by districts. And I don't know what the average population size is. There really isn't a lot of data out there. I know when the idea came up, I did some research into, on ICMA, International City Managers Association, League of California Cities websites to see if there was any published papers on it, and I couldn't find any.
Well, I mean, it is an LA model. It's, it's what LA does, what San Francisco, New York and Chicago do. And so, it's, I don't know how that model's working, but anyway.
So, let me, let me try the motion here, Chris. I, I want to take a shot at it because we need to get back together within 30 days from the time, to, to consider the report and also to, to have that presented to us. And then, we have to submit the initiative for election or adopt it immediately. So, I, I move that we go with option three, which is to order a report concerning the effect of proposed initiative, as well as the other items we've included here pursuant to Election Code Section 9212. State law requires the report presented to the council at the time prescribed with council in the later than 30 days from this meeting. I recommend, I just looked at the calendar, I recommend, we have a joint commission committee meeting on the 30th, which seems like that might be a timely time to go over this and to, to consider that so that we schedule a special meeting to be able to consider that report at that time. When the report is presented to the council, it is required to either adopt the ordinance within 10 days or submit the initiative for election at the city's next regular council meeting. Election occur not less than eight, eight days after the date of the order of election. So, we would schedule then a special meeting on that date of the 30th of August. We could consider it at that point and then make our decision going forward on the, on the option one or two. Is that clear, Joanne? That's my motion.
That's a motion by Brown.
I'll second.
Second by Hamm. All in favor?
Oh, Mayor, could I just have you clarify one thing on that?
Sure.
Just, I know that in just common parlance, you'd call that a special meeting, but technically, an ordinance can only be teed up at a regular meeting. So, we'll work with Joanne on making that agenda an adjourned regular meeting. It won't make any difference to you or public, but I just wanted to make that little correction.
Then I would amend my motion, consider, to have that-
And we'll be adjourning to that at the end.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. Motion by Brown, second by Hamm, all in favor?
Aye.
And I remain opposed because I would welcome to debate the candidates on this, I would welcome to debate the candidates on this because I still remain of the opinion that it is one of the dumbest things I've ever heard of, so.
Don't hold back, Bob.
Three to one.
Share your feelings.
Okay. Oral Communications Part Two, I, I have a card.
Lauren Kramer.
Hi, Council Mayor. I probably should have spoke earlier. I'm actually so fired up about what I just listened to and just what I've watched throughout the council meetings on this subject that I'm here to talk about, which is STLUs. And now, listening to Malamute and Bieber, it's kind of scary because the whole reason this whole districting is because of these two who, I, I'm not sure why Malamute is. It's kind of just a scary thing. They're trying to tear the village by the sea apart. And I've lived everywhere in this town. I couldn't imagine not being apart and unite, like a unity, like a whole, like one. It just is, it seems so crazy and dumb. Exactly. Crazy and dumb, just because I know how it can, like, transpired. It's just crazy. Absolutely insane. So, anyone can run for city council, and Dan Bane, you can run for city council. So, I think you should. But there's, what if you wouldn't, didn't have somebody to run in that district? It just doesn't make sense. But it's because of STLUs. So, I'm going to get on my subject, why I'm here tonight. I was out for a run with my son and my dog, and I saw somebody walking with a suitcase. And I live by a sovereign sober living home. And so, I was like, you know, I'm just going to talk to her and see what her story is. So, I talked to her. She is from Kansas City. She told me that things were not right in the home and that she had no phone, nowhere to go, she was heading to the beach. And so, I've had an issue with the STLU next door, my, to, door to my house. And I've called since May 21st, and I talked to code compliance, and I've called five times. There's three complaints on that home after five times. But the thing that I don't get is they don't have a permit, an STLU permit, the one next door to my house. So, I'm kind of going off subject, but the, let me go back to the sovereign subject. I'm kind of, I'm not a good public speaker. Anyways, the sovereign subject, I called code compliance because I thought, "I need to make note of this because she might be on the loose and they might be looking for her. Who knows?" I just needed to make note of it, so it was in the system. The lady that I spoke to, she is just, she is an answering service. So, it's just like leaving a message on a, a machine. So, there's really nothing that she could do. So, I called the sheriff's non-emergency line because I saw the white vans running, like, driving around the town in the streets looking for her. And so, I thought, you know, it's probably better that a sheriff is looking for her than the white vans with the blue shirts. And so, I called the sheriff, and hopefully, they went to the house to make sure it's okay because a non, oh, shoot. Anyways, an off-duty police officer told me that usually, there are criminals, and I, I hate to say this, but I'd like to know, are they criminals? Like, how can the city be able to tell the neighbors that they have criminals next door to our house? Are they, are they protected by the ADA? I don't understand, like, how-
Mrs. Kramer, would you do me a favor and call the city manager tomorrow?
I've called a couple people and I can't get anywhere.
Well, he's, he's everybody's boss.
Okay.
Right there. Talk to him.
And is he, can I talk to him about code compliance, about the STLU next door to my house?
You can talk to him about anything. You, you can talk to him about anything you want to.
Oh, are you? Sorry. Okay, thank you. I'll call you tomorrow.
Thank you. Mr. Malamute.
I apologize for whatever happened earlier. It just, it just gets me in cense. But in, for this lady who just spoke, I just want you to know, I haven't taken a position at all on any of these issues. I'm a libertarian who just believes that we should have districts. Don't put me in the same pool with anybody else. And I started this. Jim Bieber didn't bring it to me. I started this myself. So, let's just correct that record. You voted like you voted, but I want to, I want to explain something. I'm not asking you to change your vote. But the, the statement that we need to review this fully before it goes to the vote, I couldn't agree more. But that doesn't mean we had to delay anything. That could have been done in 30 days. That'll take you to the end of August. That still gives three months before the election. Why this council would want to delay the election when they, they stated the only purpose tonight to delay it was to get a report? Fine, there's plenty of time to get a report. Vote it down. Have us lose. It's inconsistent to tell these people that signed it, good faith or bad, that we should delay this two years. It, it, it strikes me as being, everybody up there is holier-than-thou saying, "We believe in your right to vote." And then, you said, "Because we need to prepare a report." You could have prepared that in June. You could have prepared it now and just voted to put it on the ballot. Why didn't you? It, it strikes me as, it's all very disingenuous. I, I actually like what the mayor said. Let's get it voted down if that's what needs to be done. You've decided not to do that. Why would you take that away from the citizens? So, that's it. I, you know, I appreciate that you're doing the job, not me, but I just find the argument that we need a report to be so absurd on its face because nothing stops this council from getting the report they asked for, giving it to the citizens, and allowing the vote to go forward in November. I would just ask you to reconsider it. Get any report you want, but let's get the vote done now. Delaying it for two and a half years? It, it, you, you guys in one week put an initiative on the ballot to raise the taxes without any report what the effects would be, et cetera, et cetera. But when it comes to the people's request, you delay it. You know, I, I just don't know what the citizens, citizens should expect of this council, but I think they expect more. Thank you, Mayor.
City Manager.
Just want to announce that on Wednesday, August 10th, in the council chambers, we're going to be hosting a water rate structure town hall meeting for the public to come and attend. Corolo Engineers, the city's consultant on water rates, will be hosting the meeting with city staff. So, that's August 10th at 6:00 PM in the council chambers.
City Attorney.
Nothing to add tonight, thanks.
City Voting Delegate and alternate to League of California Cities Annual Business Meeting. This was continued from the last meeting for you to make an appointment, for someone to represent the city at the League of California Cities Annual Business Meeting on October 7th. No, I think the city manager and the assistant city manager should be our representative.
I'm planning to be there.
You can't be our delegate, though.
Yeah, he can. And we need a, we need an alternate, so I think our-
I move to make James Maxon off our delegate for the, and then Eric is an alternate.
Motion by Brown, second by Ward. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Congratulations.
Council Roundtable.
So, I, I do have a few things. First of all, I, one of the items that has come to my attention is Mission Viejo. Bob, you may have, I know you have something about this also. Do you want, you go first about your, your letter and then, and then I'll go.
Okay. Yeah, I want to let everybody know that I'm going to, I went to a meeting last week with all the South Orange County mayors, and it was, it was called for another purpose, but the subject of the school bond came up. And I have decided to sign this as Bob Baker, Mayor of the City of San Clemente. Not, it's not on the agenda. I'm not asking the city council to sign this letter. I want to let everybody know, wasn't to let everybody know that I am going to sign this letter. It's not going on City Letterhead. It's just going with my name on it. Everyone is welcome to weigh in on this if you would like to add your, your letter to this. But basically, what it says is that the, all the mayors I spoke to were very unsure about supporting this bond issue. And it's for a lot of reasons. And mostly, the reasons are the lack of specifics in the, what's going to be done with all the money. It's a tremendous amount of money. And the voters are being asked to support a $9.1 billion state school bond. And then, on top of this, this would be a $1 billion, well, not, not really, about a $889 million local bond. And so, if you live in an area that pays taxes, which we all do, you'd be paying that tax. And then, you'd also be paying, if you lived in an area that, that paid commonly known as Melrose tax, you'd also be paying that. And then, if you had on top of that Measure A taxes, which some people have, and then this would go on top of that. And, and frankly, enough's enough. I mean, it's, it's just, it's, it's just over the top for me. So, anyway, I want to let everybody know I was going to sign this letter and send it out, along with all the other South Orange County mayors, so.
Bob, Mission Viejo just had a meeting on this very item, and it was a special meeting they called to be able to weigh in on this because of concerns regarding the community about, they have a, a long history with previous bonds that have happened there, and what they feel is they weren't properly managed. We've also had some issues with this, you know, with, you know, CUSD particular Melrose up in Toledo and, and how that's been managed. I would like for this meeting on the 30th to have maybe, you know, I don't know if CUSD would work with this, but maybe to do a presentation regarding this bond with a little more detail than what, you know, Clark Hampton came and provided, but, but to answer some questions from the council. That was a presentation, but we really didn't have a very good exchange of ideas there. And that if we do have concerns and you're willing to sign off, that this council might be able to also be informed on this, and perhaps we can take a position on it.
Well, the, the only part of that is that the board is going to vote on this on August 10th, before our next meeting, so.
Well, then, if, if, I, I'm glad you have that position on it, but I, I would say if it makes the ballot, if they're going to move forward with this, then we ought to be able to have the advisor residences to, you know.
You know, if, if it's going to make the ballot, then we'll have plenty of time to get it on the agenda. We'll see what, what effect this letter has signed by all the mayors. But, I mean, if you want to, you, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't, couldn't wait and see what the outcome is of the-
Do it at the first meeting in September.
The August, we'll see what the outcome is of the August 10th meeting. It may not make it to the ballot. They may have some, there may be some great plan in the wings that's, that's out there. We don't know. But until-
Well, then, why don't we, why don't we put it for the first meeting in September? What, what date is that?
Six, I believe.
The sixth. Why don't we put it for the first meeting in September?
Ask the school board to come and-
Yeah, at, at that time. And if we find out on that meeting of the 30th that it didn't pass, whatever the case may be, we can ask, we just say, "We don't need it anymore." But I'd like to have something scheduled so it's going to come before us. Because, you know, in a taxation component, I've had, obviously, you know, been very involved in these things, but the residents deserve to receive information and to know about, you know, our concerns about it and that there is a better way, you know, of, of doing this, you know, that, that there is a, a more appropriate way of doing this. Not that we're not supportive of a bond, that we want to have better facilities, it's just it has to be done in, in, in a deliberative way, in a way that is going to be good for our residents as we just recently vote, you know, as was demonstrated just a few minutes ago. So, I, I'd like to make sure that we have the opportunities of council to hear directly from CUSD in that first meeting in September. And if it's a non-issue and they vote not to move forward, then we can take it off the agenda on August 30th.
Well, the August 10th meeting is going to be a big, very important meeting for the school board. So, we'll, we'll see how that goes. If you want to get it on the, in the lineup, we'll, there'll be a lot of other cities asking for that same thing, so.
So, I'd like to put, if, if-
He's on our presentation, right?
I'd like to have a presentation for us to ask questions, you know, a little bit more of an exchange of ideas.
More of a staff report, right?
And, and also with a, a staff report as well regarding it, you know, for the city to weigh in on it. So, I'd like to have some, some say on it.
Tim, I appreciate where you come from that. I just, I'd, I'd prefer it be more informative than us officially taking a position. Is that what you're expecting?
Well, the city did take, the city Mission Viejo did take a position as a council. They, they, they stated that, you know, they, they've wanted to take a position. If we decide not to do that at that meeting, then that's fine, but we can take all sorts of directions to that meeting. Do we want to be unanimous? Would we rather have different, our own separate positions? But I think that, you know, we, we get a different audience than who typically attends and listens to the CUSD meetings. And so, I think our residents deserve to hear, you know, the information from us with, you know, a staff report to help understand the issues here.
And, Tim, that, that subject, the, the subject of, you know, the school district is independent from the city. That subject did come in, up at the meeting, and I, I raised the issue because it's really, you know, the, the two are together, but they're really separate. I mean, it's their bond, it's their money, but they are our taxpayers. And that's why I, that's why I decided to sign this letter and do that because it's-
And we can all, perhaps at the end of that, say, each of you following your own conscience, but it'd be a nice way to transmit information over YouTube.
So, I guess my only request then, Tim, with your request is that the staff report be open and not have a direction for council.
Exactly. Not have a recommendation. I think that's a fair, you know, estimation. We can make a decision at that time.
One of the things I would like to know in the staff report and I'd like to request is Ranch on Mission Viejo, that new development, they were, CUSD is considering leaving them out of this? And yet, our new C summit is, is in it. And I think that is not equitable, and I think we should question that. I really don't understand why that development was left out. I don't think the county's being equitable to our residents. That is a new, they took the position that maybe people-
See, someone's got a big Melrose.
Well, I think Ranch on Mission Viejo has Melrose, don't they?
No, it does. They're in a very similar position. It's interesting.
So, the county said something like, "Oh, we don't want to do that because the school district, I'm sorry." No, I think the county talked about it. I actually, I actually think the, the county said that that was not a good thing.
Before we get too deep, let's just have...
Okay, all right. But I would like to know that, because as a council, I would like to question why our residents are being charged and others aren't.
Chris, anything? Kathy?
I do. I need to, we're going to have a big agenda on this next council meeting. I need to ask to agendize for the next meeting, an update from staff, where TCA is in their process of studying a 241 connection to the Five Freeway. I'd like the staff report to state what options have been presented in the mobility meeting so far, and what options affect San Clemente, and what recommendations staff has for a position council could take at that meeting. I'd like it to include a copy of the 2010 council resolution, where the council took a position on a 241 extension, and have staff analyze that resolution and how it applies to today, and any additions or corrections staff would currently recommend in this report, for a new resolution for the council to consider, if that's what we decide to do. But it needs to be agendized very soon, because TCA is in the process of making decisions of what they're going to do.
I'd love to hear that. I vote yes on that one. I'd love to hear that. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, grand opening of Pico Park tomorrow, 3 o'clock, brand-new park, I get to cut another ribbon. I'm adding to my record as most ribbon cuttings for parks.
Okay, I do have, oh, do you have a slide on Pico Park?
No.
No, no, no. Oh, yeah, don't go on the slide, Bob. We'll be calling it the Bob Baker Memorial Park after you, you know, fall to your, yeah, exactly.
I'm going on that slide.
So, one other thing, sorry, one council member, right, I forgot. Okay. So, everyone saw earlier the flags, the San Clemente City flags we had made. I think we made a couple hundred of these?
100.
100 of these, just to get them out there. You see there, the wonderful resident who put that, put this, the flag on his arm, I think that's amazing. By the way, the tattoo artist was phenomenal on that.
I think he's got the date wrong, I think it was '27.
No.
That's terrible, don't even say that. That would be funny, though. Yeah, I think he spelled, no, no. So, this is great. And one of the things that I wanted to chat about tonight was, this idea came about from being on Facebook, folks wanted to see a little bit more about San Clemente. You can take off the tattoo, I'm sorry, Laura. And one of the things I really wanted to develop as a city is, there's an incredible appetite for residents to proclaim that they're very proud of being residents of San Clemente. And so, I wanted for this council to explore something that would be considered, would be called a logo shop, or something where the city would actually be able to create city products that we would sell, not for profit, but just to get them out there, for people that could be proud of being residents of San Clemente. We're really the only ones who could do it, because we own these images, and that we could do it to the benefit of maybe the Beaches Parks and Rec Foundation. If they were sold, could they sell it for profit through our charity groups? If they're sold the golf course, you know, can we go to their benefit and other things like that? But, you know, people are going to want these, and they're going to want, you know, Joanne earlier had brought up the idea of a commemorative plate when San Clemente turns 100. How cool would that be to have limited edition, and prints, and photographs? I mean, the Historical Society want to work with us to have cool photographs of San Clemente, but I think that there's a real appetite for people to be proud of San Clemente. We are proud, it's an awesome town. And so, what I'd like to do is maybe for city staff to look into what it would be like for the city to either themselves develop a line of products we could sell, or to have, work with one of the foundations, or a vendor who can help us develop these things, so that people can have access to San Clemente products, and we can show more pride in our city. At the very least, we're going to do more of these flags, so that people can, everyone in San Clemente can have a flag that can fly proudly and be able to give as gifts. And so, I think this is, this should be the beginning of something greater, and I'd love to see it go towards a good cause, you know, if we're going to do it for the benefit of something, if we can do hats, you know, could we have San Clemente hats, you know? Yeah, and just all sorts of good stuff. So, I'd like to provide some direction, maybe for staff to come back with some options on what that could look and feel like, and, you know, so we can all be proud of our city. And, you know, it's, I mean, frankly, our brand is amazing. As a city, our brand is amazing, and I think that we ought to be proud of that and leverage it.
So, Tim, I support that idea, and I think, one thought that comes to my mind is having something at the community center, by where Beaches Parks and Rec office is at, and we can offer it to, say, friends of San Clemente Beaches Parks and Rec to staff it on weekends, and sell exactly what we're talking about, and then they recoup all the profit from it.
Like, what about the fair? Like, the fairs we have on the weekends, right? The little village fairs, the art festivals, they could have a little booth, I mean, there's so many options out there. Listen, I'd pay 30 bucks for this, you know, we made it for 20, I'd pay 34, because it's awesome, and I'd love for the Beaches Parks and Rec friends to get 10 bucks from it. How cool would that be? So, anyway, I think there's a lot of options out there for us to explore. I'd just love to see, I mean, it's a win-win, right? We'd be able to have our brand out there, and also be able to go for a good cause. So, that's my thoughts. So, I wanted to adjourn tonight's meeting in honor of Norma Hernandez. She was born in San Clemente, she was a resident her whole life. She was born October 25th, 1975. We all knew her from her service in the Chamber of Commerce. She was a friend to everyone she met, and always saw the best in everyone. She was a hard worker, she was someone who served our community so proudly and loved it very much. I think most important, and probably what is Norma's greatest source of pride, is her family, her children, Jamie Diaz, Austin Madison, Joshua and Callum, and her husband in Taro. I'd like to adjourn this meeting in her honor. She will be missed, she had a beautiful service, and it was worthy of her, and she was the best part of San Clemente. One of the people who you met in town, who really represented everything we're about, and we hope to be. We're going to really miss her. Our heart, our hearts go out to the family, and especially, one of the things I wanted to note is, there were so many people who stepped up with benefits, and with meals, and other things with the family. I'd like to express my gratitude for them in really supporting the family, and just say goodbye to Norma, and for what a wonderful person she is, thanks for, thanks for all you did, and thanks for being who you are. So, I'd like to adjourn in her honor tonight, and to our next regular city council meeting to be held on August 30th at 7:00 PM at the San Clemente Golf Course Wedgwood Banquet Room, located at 150 Abidina Magnolena, San Clemente, California, for the purpose of meeting in joint session with the city's commissions and committees. Now, I may have to note that we would probably have that meeting here, due to the recording capability and broadcast capability. Would we be relocating that?
It doesn't have quite the quality, but there's no way we could fit everybody...
Then I'll say at this point, a location to be determined at some point.
Well, we can't.
Okay. At Wedgwood. So, we'll do it at Wedgwood Banquet Room. And we adjourn in Norma's honor, and wish her family all the best. Thanks, Norma.
Motion by Brown, second by Baker. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously. And I think a city clerk bobblehead will...